You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 14th meeting for the La Porte County Budget Hearings. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we know, we're kind of in a crunch this week. Revenue projections just now coming out of January. We'll review them, and we know that we've got a challenge with over the next three years with changes to legislature. I just wanted to ask for colleagues up here at the council to consider what we're doing to be different than what we've done in past years. If you look at it, we've tried to set a budget in a means to be able to run efficient government by giving department heads the ability to run their departments accordingly, and then in some cases, being, doing so at the detriment of others by having to require additional appropriations for basic items such as, for additional items such as gas, overtime, things like that, that we would pull out of funds that are typically used, or at least generically defined as more like a capital improvement, or not necessarily emergency, but ad hoc type items. As we look at this with understanding that 2026 is flat, and that we haven't provided salary increases to the county since my time on the council, let's keep in mind that last year's had a minimum while we're also looking at how we're funding things slightly different. Meaning, let's focus more on the overtime, let's focus more on the fuel, let's focus more on the regular planned, you know, recurring expenses, and then the things such as the special projects that may come up, but we don't know what they are yet and they're undefined, to not necessarily focusing as much there. Additionally, assuring that we are more disciplined in funding different accounts, that we assure that those expenditures fit the definition of those. In past budget workshops, I've asked about things like electric, like water, that we, that they're truly to the utility and not necessarily a loose definition of electric, or loose definition of water. Plumbing projects don't feel, don't fit as a water utility. Electrical projects do not fit as the electrical utility. So, we'll see some questions when we come to those sessions, when those appropriate departments are up here. Any further comments from my colleagues up here at the desk? Mr. Yagowski.
So, in definition of the last meeting, we had people come up for the same thing, overtime and that stuff. So, we're looking at trying to cut, of course, and there was over $3 million that was listed down, that they were going to come back and put into our budget, that we're normally coming back for. That was just our last meeting. So, I don't, I'm not quite understanding how we're going to sit there and balance this whole, but we're still playing a shell game, because no matter what, the same bills are due. I don't care where you take it out of, the same bills are due. You know, as we're trying to get into this situation, and we just got this last memo, and those people came up there and asking for longevity, you know, we give the highest longevity, highest amount of longevity, and all the three poor counties are up there. It's one of the things that we actually lead into. And not one person complains about it when they get all their money upfront, but as soon as they get their, their 30 years ago, it's not fair. I don't, I'm sorry, they've signed up for it. Most of those people has been like that for 30 years. So, it's not, it wasn't something that we just threw at them, it's something they understood. But now we're looking at that, we look at all these other things that people are coming up with. It sounds great to give that away, but if you're giving stuff away, you have to get something to get returned for that. Example was the last raise that we gave away, the huge amount of raise we gave away, we didn't change anything with the insurance, didn't do anything with the type of stuff that we're supposed to do. That same year, I proposed, the county council did, not the commissioners, but of course they took credit for it, that we were going to have the Juneteenth holiday. But we said, let's give up the day of, of the voting day, when we're voting that day, because in the old days, back in the old days, everything was manual, and everybody had to work, and you had a lot of people in offices. Now, everything's on computer. Nobody's needed here at the, for voting. They're here, they can do their job here, but what do they do? The commissioners said, oh yeah, we'll trump you on it, we're going to give another holiday away. We had the largest amount of holidays, 14 holidays, and there was, and these four holidays have only been, the four extra holidays have only been accumulated last 10 years. If you get into the situation here with, I mentioned like Switzerland, I told some of you guys that they, last year, they were in trouble, they had to go 10% across the board, and they, they actually asked their own department heads to do it. A few years back, we asked for 5% across the board, and we received it. Mike, I know you were on council with me, and so was Randy at the time. And we received it. To generically do that, I know it's difficult, but it, you know what, after the first three or four people came in, everybody came in line, and they came back with their own budgets to stay within those numbers. You mentioned about things out of the box, those are things that we need to do. We can't continue to, to say that we're not giving our employees anything when they get 14 holidays a week, and then they get vacations right off the bat, where most employers don't get it that quickly as they do. So, we got to remember what we're also doing, I mean, because it all sounds great that we're not giving raises, but we also have a great, great package to, as far as the insurance, as far as the benefits there for this, for this county as a whole. So, I think that we need to start looking at a lot more things. One of the leading things that we've talked about for the last, since the old time clocks, was time clocks. People are not accountable for their hours. It's just a fact. I mean, we can sit there and, I can sit there in departments and point out people and everything, but we don't need to do that. Let's just fix the problem right off the bat. That's the number one thing that we should be doing right now, is voting for something like that and saying, okay, how much is it going to cost to put the system in? Somehow, I don't know what, how it was, but HR got involved, and she started bidding it out for us last time, and that's not what we need. We, as a group, the commission and council, have to do that together. Those are things that we can start saving money on right off the bat, and not, and not say that, let's just don't sell ourselves that we don't give raises away, we give great benefits away. And that's great. That attracts people, we need that. We need to attract new people to come to the county. But we simply don't, we simply can't do what we've done in the past. And insurance is the top of the ladder, of course, as we, of course, we all know that. The last thing I want to mention is that commissioners, I, I have total respect for Mr. Haney, I've talked to him about this whole thing, but you know, all of a sudden, he says, it won't cost the county anything, but we have, we had this program, we started with the insurance program for this wellness group. It's not being utilized. First of all, it should have came to the council, because it did cost us something. Money doesn't grow in trees, it was the savings that we were supposed to get back that pays the bills, but we're paying for that. The last I mentioned is, the situation is that with that case, it's not working. But yet, we can't just give it up, we've given the employees another benefit. Well, it's great, but nobody's using it. Not one person, the percentage is less than 3% of the employees are using it. So, that's it, I'm done, thank you.
So, to that point, I've asked that Eric Gibson come in sometime in the next two days, in order to present what he's looking at in terms of a package for 2026 and beyond. So, I want to touch base with, with the auditor, make sure we can fit it into the schedule, and then of what we have here, and then go forward.
Yeah, tomorrow is usually a good day after, afternoon usually, but we have the time, did he indicate a time?
He gave me a range.
Did he?
Yep.
And we had to look by the time, so that was.
Please turn your microphone on.
As I was saying, we, we had an email exchange, and we're looking at tomorrow morning before 11:00 a.m., so sometime between 9:00 and 11:00 tomorrow, instead of the time that we had originally proposed, we just have not solidified the exact time. So, we can have that done before the end of the day. I did want to make a comment regarding Mr. Yagowski, time management systems, the three that were suggested last year, were going to fail for various reasons, they're extremely expensive. We found one that works better, we cannot get it implemented until 2026, start implementation. We're going to start working with bringing in department heads, letting them get to know what the program is, and getting the costs, once we figure out what the true cost is, because it's multiple layers of costs, and then I want to know what the running cost is every year, because some use time clocks, some don't. So, without knowing who's going to have time clocks and who doesn't, that's going to be part of it. But we'll, we'll bring a proposal in front of you for it.
Really quick, again, that's something that, that's something the commissioners and councils should be doing. And I repeated this, because I, the three that came up were no good, and again, I'm not saying yours is any better, but we have, this is our decision, guys, it's not their decision.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could you, could you, before the end of the day tomorrow, get an idea of what that costs, so we can look at the budget, if it's going to be for 2026? Because we need to get that, just to ballpark.
Well, again, that was going to be hard to narrow down for today, for today or tomorrow. So, I can, I'll pull up the contract tonight, and I will have some sort of number.
Because I agree, it's imperative that it work with the records keeping, so that it's.
Yeah, but we're not talking $300,000, which was brought to us, so we're looking less than 100.
But, so that'd be good, so, because we need to make sure that's included in the budget if it's going to be.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
I got a comment on Mr. Yagowski's, with the 5% that was volunteered from the department heads to reduce their budget, was it two, three years ago?
Oh, that was.
Four years ago?
No, that was six years ago.
Oh, okay. You know, that might have been a good idea, but I noticed, and I think probably everybody that was on the council at that time, it was a good idea to do that at that time, but then it was like it didn't sustain, because they just came back to us for that additional, that they, that 5% that they cut out of their budget anyway, or even more so. So, really, I just don't think that was, that worked, in my opinion, but.
We definitely.
I think, I think it just needs them to really examine their budget, and try and make some costs that will be sustainable.
I would agree with Councilman Mullenhauer's comments, that just asking for cuts doesn't necessarily lead to long-term savings. If you ask someone to make a cut, usually they're, the first thing that they're going to do is avoid cutting salaries for their employees, because those are people, and so then they're going to look at the remaining 25% of their budget in a lot of cases, or at least in our general fund, the 25% that is non-salaries, non-personal services. And if you just take a line item out for maintenance to save your 5% or 10%, and you just kick that maintenance down the road several years, it's going to come back later. And sometimes that ends up being more expensive, because you didn't take care of things each year as it needed to be taken care of. And so then we haven't really saved ourselves any money, we just pushed it to a later date, and now we have a new problem to deal with. So, understanding where we're actually making cuts, and why it's going to work, I think is an important part of the process. And then, just as kind of an opening remark, I think it's important that we really find a way to be able to give cost of living adjustments for our, for our employees. In an environment where inflation occurs, just keeping salaries the same isn't enough, that's actually asking our employees to take a pay cut. Their purchasing power is declining each year when we don't give some sort of cost of living adjustment. So, how we fit that into the budget is the big question of the day, but I think we should be mindful that we need to find a way to do it. That's all I got.
Just one real quick question.
Mr. Yagowski.
Just remember, this is the best part about, for the last 30 years, we don't have a December meeting, you know why we don't have a December meeting? Because that December, they used to just come in and ask for all the money they, they didn't get all year long. So, it actually does work to have the cuts, but.
I just want to, I just want to echo that somebody had mentioned about personnel, but we need to, we need to find a way to work smarter and, and with less people in the areas that we can. I'm not saying every department, some departments don't have that many employees, sheriff's department's a tough one, EMS, those places, it's hard to cut special services. But there's obviously offices that, you know, and people have said, I think Mr. Yagowski says it quite often, that with the technology and everything that we've gotten, we haven't reduced the staffing, and with the insurance issues that we have and everything, the only way we're going to get there is by reducing personnel through attrition, not, nobody's talking about firing anybody or laying anybody off, but through attrition, we need to find a way to work smarter. So, that's it.
Last call for comments. With that, Mr. Sheriff?
Morning.
Good morning. Sorry for the delay.
Quite all right.
So, we want to start with 105?
Are we going to talk 100s at this time, or are we just going to go straight to?
I would say let's, let's go through 100s, to some degree, just, let's, I know it's not traditional, but it's stuff we've got to look at. So, Mr. Sheriff, I see some reduction in requests for clerks and captain slash detective, I'm assuming that's changes in seniority?
Correct.
All right, and then, of course, sergeants, sergeants detective, patrolmen, those are steps in the positive direction in terms of longevity.
Correct, yep.
All these, all these increases are longevity?
Correct.
And then.
Are you connected up there?
No, I keep getting kicked off. Sorry, darling.
Darling, darling. Is that what it is?
Who's connected, who's connected Bluetooth? I'm on HDMI. Yep. Yeah, I think it's something else, but we'll figure it out. All right. I also see a $30,000 request for computer repair and maintenance, and it looks like last year that was an open, did not have a request for that at all. Is that what shows up in yours, for 2025?
Are you saying we didn't spend it, or?
You didn't, no, in 2025, you didn't ask for any, is what I'm seeing here.
We changed our budget number, so it wasn't under 213, it was under a different number.
It got moved to a different number, yes.
Understood, okay.
And you put the 198,000 in there for overtime?
Correct. Yeah, that's for the merit overtime. I think it was the, the May meeting, you guys had recommended that I come back and give a more of an accurate number as far as cost of overtime. We did a five-year historical analysis of our overtime for the merit side and for the jail, and these are the numbers that we have come up with.
This is, this is the average of those five years, then?
Correct.
So, other than that, everything is pretty much the same, except for the steps.
Except for the steps, correct.
The overtime.
Yeah.
Could you walk through, like, how might we save money on, on overtime expenses? Is this something that, that changes in how we operate might lead to savings, or is this something that's largely unavoidable without?
Well, I think it's unavoidable, just to the nature of the business that we're in with emergency services, we don't know what's going to transpire from one day to the next, and if we're going to get into a long-drawn-out investigation, or a major crash, or anything like that. I mean, we try to limit the overtime as much as possible, but there's always the unknowns out there, you know, we can plan for the worst and hope for the best type of stuff, and there's just going to be overtime there.
Do you have anybody on active duty or anything? Because I know sometimes you have.
We've got, we've got a gentleman now that's overseas as well, you know, military commitments, throws a wrench into the, the cost of doing business as well, too, yeah.
I have one comment, it's, it's an old idea, I guess, or it's something that was done in the past, and I agree with what the sheriff says, overtime, most of it is just something you're stuck with, you can't get, can't avoid. But, and I know it's very difficult getting volunteers anymore, but you know, that really helped me when I was sheriff, and my chief deputy with the budget, because we had a reserve program, that at least we could utilize them for things such as parades, bicycle tours that go through the county, motorcycle tours when St. Joe County used to come through. And that really helped, you know, every little bit helps. And I know it's difficult getting volunteers, but in my opinion, I think that should be looked at again, but it's very inexpensive and.
The volunteer program had helped in several occasions. The problem was, is they changed the state law that required the reserves or volunteers to have the number of continuing training hours that a full-time police officer has, 24 hours a year. These individuals that were volunteering have outside jobs, outside responsibilities, and they weren't keeping up with the training hours, so effectively, they've lost their certification. We can't have individuals out on the streets, working, making arrests, if they're not certified. So, based on that reason, it was, we got done away with the reserve program, that was the biggest one. As far as overtime, we've taken different steps throughout the department to help lower the cost of overtime. One of them, we've assigned detectives out of the detective bureau to the street to help backfill and help support the cause, on a temporary basis, when we needed to. We had an individual who was on light duty because of an injury, we had a sergeant that we removed from the bureau and put back on the streets to help reduce some of the overtime as cost. We do take steps to try to keep it as low as possible, but again, it's just, some of it's just the cost of doing business.
I agree, and I know there is a problem with training with reserves, but we utilized in-house training when I was sheriff, and at no expense, and I don't know, I just think that it's something that should be looked at again. And if, you know, if a person's dedicated enough, and there's a lot of them that want to really help the county, and, and I know you've got a, and I had it too, a program where it's, people come in and want to learn about, about the county, and that's coming up, I think, in September, which is good, again, I'm glad to see that's being brought up again. But you can also probably get some volunteers from that, and they just have to be aware that, hey, they're going to have to dedicate themselves to that many hours of training, and it's usually done in the evening, and that's how we did it. But it's just something that I think that you might want to consider.
Sure.
As it relates to overtime, unless we see there being a scenario where we're going to tell the sheriff, no, we're not going to fund additional overtime for you, and I think that's highly unlikely. If we're going to say yes, no matter what, we should just have it in the budget from day one, so that we know that that expense is, is there. It's inevitable.
I guess my only, my only comment to that is, it's all got to fit in a package. So, if it doesn't fit in a package, it can't fit, I mean, we're going to have to fund it later with another account.
Which could just mean that we budgeted out of another account right from the beginning, too.
And I'm okay with that, we'll put it in a, whether we put it in public safety lit, put it in somewhere, but we account for it, but it might not be in the general fund.
Yeah, the one thing, I just, I think it's kind of my opening comments, is trying to avoid it being out of a riverboat, or out of a economic development, or something like that. Two quick questions for you, Mr. Sheriff. Looking at ERT training, pretty low on terms of forecasted cost, but I'm assuming that goes in ebbs and flows, to where that'd be consumed by the end of the year?
Absolutely, a lot of the times, we'll save some money toward the end of the year for like ammunition costs, less lethal munitions, gas munitions, stuff like that, to restock the supply going into the next year.
Which was a great segue to firearms training.
Same thing.
Same thing. Wait for a pallet of rounds to come in, okay.
And, may I?
Yes.
But one of the things that, that'll come up, and it might come up under the 911 and other departments, but the radios that the county funded several years ago, for the entire county, are now getting close to the end of their life, so.
Correct, we've had, we've had several meetings here recently in regards to that, that the 800 megahertz radios are starting to get at their end of life, no fault to our own. My, for one, I'm not a fan of it, not a fan of the 800 megahertz radio, I'm not saying that I am, it was a game changer when we went to that. Not a fan of Motorola coming and telling us that these radios are at the end of life, and I've expressed, expressed my displeasure with that, because I, I don't know if I agree with that, but.
And the price has gone from around a $2,000 to $3,000, up to $7,000 to $10,000 for the same.
Correct.
Radio with the bells and whistles. So, it's, I know with the 911 advisory board, everybody's talking there, and we're looking at other options and avenues.
Correct.
Things there, but it's going to be something that, whether it's you, EMS, you know, all the different departments are going to, we're going to have to deal with coming up.
Yeah, coming up.
Big price tag.
Any other thoughts or comments? That all entertain motion?
I'll approve the 2 and 300 accounts.
We're going to approve 2 and 300s. I have a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Passell.
All in favor?
Question, discussion. What do we want to do about overtime?
It's in a 100 account.
Yeah, so are we saving that for later, or?
I think it needs to be, well, the next item's a public safety lit, so that's probably a spot to look at it.
Let's hold off for that for now. I mean, I, even though we're looking at the 100 accounts right now, we, being the fact that we're looking at increases is probably favorable to say that we're going to make some changes somewhere in the future with them, so whether that be overtime or straight salaries, let's, yeah, let's hold off for now, and then we'll see where we're going to go with it. Okay, all right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, PS Lit 105.
The public safety is right behind.
Thank you. Mr. Sheriff, I see increase to captain detective, I assume that's a step, same goes for sergeants detective?
Correct.
Okay. Vehicles. I know we budgeted for those last year, but that must have came out of a different account than the 42,000? I'm getting a yes.
Human got it later.
I had come in and asked for it, I think it was the end of last year, coming into this year, and the auditor's office had already had the money budgeted aside for it, out of, I think it was PS Lit going into this year. At the request, it was asked that we put it in going into this year, that we, like you said, we have a true and accurate depiction of what we need.
Pension benefits, it's to be about a $55,000 bump there.
$55,718.
Is that a normal, is that what?
That's, that's actually, an increase is over pension, that, yeah, that's normal, it might be a little on the low side, which is a good thing.
Is that what the actuaries are saying needs to be?
Exactly, the exact number, yes, sir.
Okay. And then incentive pay is up 1,800?
It's up, again, we're just, we're finally getting to a point with being fully staffed, we're getting some of these positions filled and moving forward, and individuals are getting trained and becoming on some of, part of that, so, it just, we're just, it's a good sign, it's, it means we're in a good place, we're fully staffed, and we're getting people in these positions.
Okay. Now, looking at balances right now, as I understand this, PS Lit at the end, at the end of June was just shy of 1.2 million, and we expect roughly 7.5 million next year in revenue?
I'm sorry, on which one?
I apologize, PS Lit, roughly, it's about.
No, it's 8.4.
8.4.
It's a little over 8.4, and hopefully, within this, next week, I'll have an updated number. They're supposed to start releasing some numbers tomorrow, but that may not be.
Did you mention that the cars were in lit budget?
I believe the cars come out, got the money out of. We're trying to find that answer for you, I don't have it right now.
That's why I'm looking at the lit budget right now, I don't see.
It came out of the 216.
Came out of the what?
216.
Question on the, on the budget books for the auditor's office.
That came out of the cumulative capitals.
If there were additional appropriations that were done during the year, are those reflected in the, the column that's 2025 adopted budget? Or?
No, it's going to be the same thing, well.
It's only what was approved as part of the budget, not necessarily what came after?
Yes.
Okay.
As you know, you've been through this, down that road before with other people, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's not attainable with this. We started putting together a list, so that we could help out, and you see that they've already been working on those numbers as well, so you're going to see a lot of that go in.
So, it's already in, it's in our.
PS Lit.
Public safety lit.
Budget.
Budget, for next year.
Yes.
Yep. So, looking at.
It's in there.
Looking at ending balance, looking at the need for overtime to be fully funded, Justin, to your question earlier, is we're at 6874, or current request out of lit, and that's short this 160 for the firefighters. Want to entertain moving it to PS Lit?
Sure.
Well, may I say one thing? ARP funds are, firefighters are getting another round.
For this year.
In '26.
Right.
Out of ARP funds.
Good point.
So, it's not till '27 where you need to budget for them.
But it should, it could show for this year as a zero, and then next year's, yeah, but it should still be a line item in the budget.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
More my numbers updating is entirely off of the individual request by department, Correct. More my numbers updating is entirely off of the individual requests by department, and firefighters don't have a page. So...
How much was that? 18,000 or something?
It was, it was 15,000.
160.
I mean, 10,000.
10,000.
And then it was 10,000 normally, but out of ARP, it was moved up to 15.
Correct, for two years.
For the two years.
Question for the auditor's office, maybe payroll, is it going to make anything more complicated to have this approved down a PS Lit as opposed to the general fund? Does any additional?
Yeah, there is a problem giving it out of general fund. It has to be out of public safety lit, because there was a special exception made for that.
Okay. PS Lit is fine. Then I would make a motion to approve the request down of Lit Public Safety 105 for everything except the 100s, but including the 200s, 300s, and the overtime amount that we discussed before.
So, do you want to move the overtime number into here?
Next year.
Is that what you're telling me?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to move the overtime number from the increase in the overtime from the general into the increase in public safety?
The 138,000 that was, that the sheriff is forecasting.
I'm just trying to be very clear.
Yep, for the record.
And so that, for the record as well. So, I appreciate you.
So, we're keeping books straight. You said $138,000 increase. So, you want to leave the 60 in general fund?
Yeah, that's already there, unless you want to move it.
All right. So, drop this to 60. Change this to 198. So, that takes our general fund request down 138,000 and raises PS Lit up on 138,000. All right. So, they have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. Keel, second by Mr. Kessler. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. So, now we are to
Drop this to 60.
145.
But you got to dig through the book.
That's why I didn't dig out the book.
I'm assuming we're doing the public safety lit. You got a page here for the answer right here.
Yep.
All right.
So, we'll start with 145 out of general. Similar request to what we talked about in overtime, I see extra higher part-time seasonal increase from 103 to 200,000.
Again, a five-year historical analysis of what we spent average throughout those years. That's how we've come up with that number.
Good. Jailers, counselor seems in line. Corporals in line. Food. Another one you come back?
What's your total expenditure for food? You got in a 2,000 account, you're requesting 324,000, but in PS Lit, you got 396.
Right.
So, is that?
We're looking to increase it to 720. And again, that's a five-year historical analysis of how much we've spent over the last five years to come up with that number.
Is that, that's that contract, then?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, how many year contract is that?
It's a year-by-year contract that...
Have they raised the contract? I'm sure they have.
It goes up every year. We did take a step at the beginning of this year, and we switched our commissary to go along with them. And by that, it did provide us a 5 cent per mil savings.
They won't go with a longer contract, like three years or something?
You know, it's a good question. It's something that we can obviously discuss to see if we can, by going a longer contract, if it will keep the price down a little bit, yeah.
Or maybe another company would, and put a little pressure on who you've got now.
Right.
I'd rather, I personally would rather see the $120,000 increase go into the public safety lit food line than in the general fund, if it's meant to be, so. You don't care, do you?
No.
I think you did.
Any other comments? Mr. Counselman. Mr. Novak, I'll entertain a motion.
My motion would be to, as presented, with moving the food, holding the food at the 2025 amount of 204, 204,000, and then shifting that to the Lit Public Safety food line.
And then approve the 200s and 300s?
Yeah. Just, and professional services, that's medical?
That's our jail medical, correct. Yep.
So, that's my motion.
Motion is, motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Keel. Any further discussion? Call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right. So, moving on to 145 Lit Public Safety. See a reduction in jailers. I assume that's seniority. Obviously, we moved the food from 396 up to 514.
514?
516.
Excuse me. Thank you. Medicals in line, corporals in line. Any questions from the council?
The...
Yeah. Absolutely.
The withholding, we don't have, we don't take any of the withholding out of there from the jailers?
No, it's all done right now from the commissioners' lines.
Got it.
So, it's, that would be a movement.
Okay.
A large movement rather than just this, and...
Hey, man. Yep.
This is all 100s and, just 100s in here, isn't it? We know. I'd make a motion to approve Lit Public Safety 145 for the 200 and 300 accounts, and then approve the 97,000 for additional overtime that was discussed under Jail 145.
I don't see any jail. I don't see...
In Jail 145, the first item was extra higher part-time seasonal overtime, basically, right?
Oh, extra staffing. Yeah. All right. So, you want to shift 97,000 from 10130 out of general to, I guess that would be 10140?
Out of PS Lit? Yep.
Basically, I'm seeing a head shake.
Should be the 10130.
All right. So, we want to, we need to make a line for extra?
Part-time. This would be creating a new line in Lit Public Safety.
Okay. Does that cause issue with what we've got? So, it looks like we're taking additional monies, the increase from 2025 to 2026 of $97,000 out of 1,000 dot 10130 to 1170 dot 10130.
And then we're creating a new account under Public Safety Lit, which is the 10130 account. Thank you.
How come we don't call it overtime?
It's just the way it's always been called. Some of our part-time help comes out of this line item as well, too. We do have a few part-time employees, and that's just what it's always been called.
Then maybe we should put a slash overtime.
Slash.
Another slash.
You have seasonal help in the jail?
No.
No.
I don't know why. I've never seen seasonal.
What season is that?
Are you looking for seasonal employment, Mr. Novak?
You never know. You never know. Might be needing some.
Yes.
It would be easier for these motions if you originally say, take it out, put it in the other account. What you're doing now, you're making two different motions. One contradicts the other one. You know what I'm saying? Because you just voted on the jail request, the 200 and 300. Now, you...
You're backtracking and going...
To LIT, then you're contradicting your first...
So, if we're going to move something, start with it in the budget that we're working on, and then?
Well, and start with the original, whoever makes the motion, say, the 203 accounts having like food taken out. Well, in this case, you're putting overtime. You're taking overtime from the first request.
You've done two. You've done, you did one from the first one, one from the other, but it's best...
Right.
Okay. We're getting it, but we're just asking you to change it.
When we go back and do the 100 counts again.
Well...
So, then...
But right now...
But I'm, I agree.
Yeah. So...
So, we should...
But, no.
Try to get it in one motion.
Or don't do the...
We'll work with you when we get to the next one.
Don't do the 100 accounts at all today.
No, you should look at everything.
I said, we can look at it, but the motion is what I'm saying.
But you can move that, if you want to move that, we'll update the pages. But I believe you have a first. I don't know if you have a second on that motion.
I had a first.
Benny was scolded.
Yeah. So, I have a, so a motion by Mr. Keel to move $97,000 from 10130 in the general to 10130 out of PS Lit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pressle. Any further discussion?
Did I also include in my motion approving the 200s and 300s out of Lit Public Safety?
You did include that as well.
That's in there, too.
And that's good for you, Mr. Pressle. All right. Anything else? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
I can understand what they're saying, because the food is at 200 and 300 again. So, what kind of...
What they're saying is like...
Okay. That takes us to courthouse security?
Where's that at?
182.
I don't have it in my book.
It's in the middle of the book.
It's in the middle. It's...
With a 140.
Where'd it go?
I don't know.
It's a mystery.
141, 182.
Just look for it in the 141.
Got it. Thank you.
With the county garage?
That's right.
Sorry.
Okay.
Did not mean to confuse. What helps security?
All right. Looks like it's the same as last year.
Same as last year. No changes.
No changes. Spending's on track for the most part. Maintenance contracts. You've got $9,000. Didn't, looks like you didn't expend any in 2024. Doesn't look like there's anything out of it this year.
It's another one of those that usually come up at the end of the year, which we should have spent the money out of 2024.
For the scanner?
Yeah.
Is the same thing, right? You can track zero? Zero in '24, zero so far in '25. Okay.
Right. The first year with the new x-ray machines is that's why we didn't have to spend any of that first year out of it, because it was there.
It was in the, it was in the first down payment?
Yeah.
Got it. All right. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
The 200s and 300s, correct?
200s, 300s, correct. So, motion from Mr. Kessler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keel. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Moving on to Lit Public Safety. Everything looks to be in line. Previous years.
These are all 100s.
Yep. Any questions on the 100 accounts right now? Then let's hold them over for further discussion. All right. Does that cover all of your business this morning, Mr. Garage?
We have the garage.
141.
141.
All right. Got it. There we go.
Actually, a little bit less.
Yeah.
Making progress.
All right. Any questions from council?
The gas, fuel, and oil numbers, are those, do you think that'll cover you for the full year? Is that based off of like a rolling average of some sort?
It's the same thing, rolling average, and it's just depending on the gas prices. And, you know, last year or two, I think we haven't had to come back and ask, because we've fallen in. Gas prices seem to be staying steadily, so I would be surprised if we have to come back again. But it's all depending on the gas prices. The number we have now is, I think, is a good number for us.
Motion to approve the 200s and 300s for Complex Garage.
Oh.
Why is it called Complex Garage?
Because it used to be here at the complex.
Oh. Mr. Novak, go ahead.
I got a quick question for you. The tool stipend, it was a one-time thing?
It's a yearly.
So, why is it not in this year's budget?
That's a good question.
They didn't put it in last year.
Second of all, how come they haven't received any of it?
They do receive it. They put it into the equipment account. So, it gets paid out of that.
Do we want to make that, make a transfer from the equipment to the stipend in order to make the books cleaner?
However you guys want to do it.
Yeah, where's equipment?
Where's the equipment on the, on the complex garage?
313?
The maintenance.
Maintenance, repair, yeah.
Okay. So, that $4,000 is in there for this next year?
But it didn't go up.
But it doesn't show an increase?
No, because it was put in last year. So...
But it wasn't, your 2024 is the same on this sheet as 2025.
I guess I should ask, are you looking at the same documents that we're looking at for our budget book?
You got a book in front of you. You'd have to...
I know. Right. I was pretty sure Ms. Trojanowski was right. It was either put in last year or maybe the year before, Randy, that it was added to. It's in there. They get it. They still get it. Yep.
I'm not going to argue with you.
If they weren't getting it, I'd be the first to know.
It's in there, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I do have a motion from Mr. Keel. Second by Mr. Mullenhour. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving 200s and 300s out of Complex Garage?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to prosecutor. Mr. Fagan, if you wouldn't mind joining us?
Morning.
All right. We'll start with your 108 account, general. See a reduction in victim advocate officer. I'm assuming that's seniority or steps?
Yes and no. We had moved, last year at budget hearing, we had received an actual, an extra $50,000 because our 2024-26 grant allotment for victim advocates was reduced. And so, by moving some funds around, mainly general funds, we were able to reduce our overall amount from 25 to our proposed 26 by about, roughly, give or take about $8,000, $10,000. So, our 2025 budget is $8,000 to $10,000 more than our proposed 2026 because of those changes. Sorry.
Okay. Otherwise, it's basically the same request as you had last year.
Yes, sir. Our 20, our 137 and our 108 are functionally the same, except for that reduction.
And the $90,000 for CASA, that's fully spent already for your allotment for the year. Is that... Is that a one-time payment for the year?
We have the head of our CASA program here who is able to answer any questions, but functionally, it's a one-time payment provided by the county to our CASA program. Well, not our CASA program, but the county's CASA program.
Okay.
That, entertained motion. It used to be under Judge Elvisos and it went to this account, but.
Okay.
It was always a one-time under Judge Elvisos.
I'll make a motion to approve the 200s and 300s for prosecutor 108, but then I do have a question under discussion.
Okay. The motion with Mr. Keel. Second by Mr. Presley. Your discussion, sir.
Yes. Under dues, I see over the last two years, it looks like each year you guys are exceeding your amount that's budgeted for dues. I'm guessing you're transferring it from another, what is that, 300 category?
Yes, yes, sir. We, we use all available general funds. And my office manager slash financial guru, Cheryl, she is a whiz with budget. And so in our spending, so when we have funds in this category that, you know, as you mentioned, and our dues are over every year, she will move funds within the available 300s to.
If that's working for you, then.
Yeah.
No need to change it.
Mr. Yagelski.
We have tried to work it out, I guess, between the past prosecutors and yourself to get your own server and everything that. And I heard it's working pretty well, except for the fact that we need to get some agreements with you letting your employees get all the information. We're not getting passed on through the, through that information. You got, you, you now run the, the server, but it's not going to your employees.
Yes, we noticed when we did the email transition over the last couple of months, finally implemented in by, by the beginning of the year. We noticed it, it over a certain point, reports from, I noticed it, my staff noticed it, that certain emails, countywide emails, were not being, you know.
Distributed, distributed.
Right, from, to an all user. And so I'm working with the commissioners to kind of figure that out, to find out the best way. We've been talking with IT. We've been talking with the commissioners because there are some issues that we have with, just not to get too deep into the weeds, we have certain security protocols that we have with the child support 4D. So we want to make sure that any mass emails are not lost or treated as spam by our system. So I've been working with the vendor for the last couple of days to kind of deal with that issue. So to address those concerns, yes.
Okay, thank you. And also with that, we're spending a lot of money trying to decide which ones, your cases you get, cases you don't, going back through history stuff. How long is that going to go? Because we're spending a lot of money on that particular issue too, with emails.
You mean regarding the ongoing, could you, could you rephrase your question or?
Yeah.
Redirect.
So according to the numbers I had, we're spending money going through the old emails to try to decide which to keep, which not to keep. Have we fixed any of these problems yet with the old emails that you didn't, that you said you didn't get before?
You think we're going to have a conclusion to that whole lawsuit thing? So we quit paying attorneys?
Well, I'll, I'll say two things. One, that, 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 that even, that lawsuit is still ongoing for some reason. And hopefully, we can get a result soon. So I can't really comment.
Soon as in before our July meeting? Was soon.
Well, it, you know, there, there is a status conference scheduled for August 5th. So in that, there, there, I can't really comment too much because it's pending litigation still, but we're trying to get that resolved as soon as we can.
Okay. If I'm not, without getting into weeds, but I think a lot of it's been worked out, right? It's just a matter of getting this sorted out now?
Uh, fine points that need to be sorted out. So details. Big picture, yes. Details are more important on this one, so.
And the last question, I brought it up here, I don't know, four or five meetings ago, four meetings ago, and you and I had, had, had discussion about it also. We still, it's still, either we have to look at the idea, and I know they brought up about time sheets, but we, the assistant prosecutors, I don't know if necessarily on this line item, are not working their 20 hours. I've discussed it before. I know that you had a discussion with one of your employees and he ended up leaving because of that issue. He's not no longer working with you. But I still have two other employees that are not putting their 20 hours in to get, to get benefits in that.
That's, the auditor and I have been having conversations about that. And I think here soon, we'll be able to come to a resolution that will, I think, definitively solve this problem or any concerns that people have.
I mean, you understand our concern.
Yes, sir.
It's benefits, you know, and so we're trying to be fair to all employees that are out there, not, you know, not just your office, but of course, everybody.
Yes, sir. And, and, and as I've made very, you know, over the last two and a half years, and as we've discussed at times, I believe I had sent an email regarding a certain study that had come out from IPAC regarding, well, it's no secret, the state Supreme Court is trying to address this. There is a, a terrible shortage of attorneys within the state of Indiana, and the state Supreme Court is looking in ways in order to, to make sure that there are sufficient numbers of attorneys within Indiana. And more importantly, that prosecutors are able to, to have sufficient attorneys, deputies in order to, to handle cases, to make sure that, that cases don't drag on for years. Because the longer a case drags on, the more it bogs down the court. Court gets frustrated. We get frustrated. Victims get frustrated. Cases get stale. So we on our end, within the constraints of both availability of, of people and within budgetary constraints, we've been able, I think, for the most part, have been able to, to, to address some of those concerns. And as always, to kind of, to allude to your point earlier, it's an ongoing process to make sure that the great responsibility that we are entrusted with, that we ask our deputies to do, that they're representing the public, that we're able to make those, you know, to live up to that high calling, that, that, and that high responsibility that they've been given. So we're trying to, to address that. And I believe I had mentioned, I know, I forget who I email on the council sometimes, but IPAC had just recently done the second version of a caseload study for prosecutors across the state. Certain counties are able to, to meet, you know, like judges and courts have, you know, you're using this amount of your allotment of, you know, the judicial system does their own studies related to this. And so LaPorte County, we are down, if I remember correctly, maybe 11 full-time deputies as to where we need to be. We've caught, we've covered some of that with some of our part-time hires and strategic decision-making within our, within our office. But we're, it's, it's an issue we're trying to, to, to always improve upon and work through.
Okay, so really quick, just, I know we brought this up before. I, I have my own complaints against Purdue University and what they did to our sister, our county PNC and those type of things. And the, and the problem is, they've, they've taken away the resources for that. So I'll give, I'll give you Valparaiso. Since they shut their law, we absolutely do have a shortage, and I'm agreeing 100% with, with attorneys. But you guys need to look at and push these colleges that are not taking care of the people they were supposed to in the first place. So that's one example I can tell you, just like, just like I know I have brought up what Purdue has done to our communities locally here too. So that's one reason you can tell them why we don't have attorneys up here.
As a graduate of Valparaiso Law School, I, I agree. So.
Okay.
All right. So I have a motion. Mr. Mullenhour.
Going back to Mr. Yagelski's first question to the prosecutor, and I wasn't real, and I heard things about this too, the emails that the employees are not getting through all, all users. Is that being, and you said it's being addressed with IT. How far along is that? When will that be resolved?
Hopefully this week.
Hopefully.
Okay. Well, like I, like I mentioned, there are certain security issues because we have one side and then a more secure side with the information, electronic security information with the child support people with 4D. We had, we had, to give an example, we had one, one, one deputy who works both criminal and child support. And so when certain emails would come to her or when she would send certain things, it would either bounce back or someone wasn't able to open it. We spent some time trying to resolve that. And if we have, if someone, you know, some of these issues, we don't want to, we want to avoid having a repeat of that scenario if someone sends us something and then these kinds of things. So hopefully this week, we'll be able to get it resolved.
Darlene, would you mind adding some technical background to that?
I've sent a request out to their vendor a couple of times to get a distribution group created for all the prosecutors because now they handle all the new emails and take the people away that have left. And that so far, Sean, has not approved through the vendor. But once they create that group, they can also plug that group. And, you know, anything coming from LaPorte that I handed back up, it's a whitelist, so nothing gets bounced back. That's kind of where I'm at with it. I can't go in further until that group is created.
Okay. And as mentioned, we've been working, the, the vendor and I, he have been speaking over the last couple of days, along with the commissioners about these kinds of things. So I've, it's being worked on. It was just so we avoid any issues in the future with people not receiving or bounce back, spam, these kinds of things. To make sure it's, it works, it's done, everybody gets what they, what they're supposed to.
Okay.
So the group hasn't been? No, okay.
All right. Any further discussion? I have a motion. Do I have a second? Did, yeah, thank you. So motion and second to approve the 200s and 300s out of prosecutor 108. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Moving on to the 108 Lit Public Safety, I see zero requested. Do you want to confirm that with a vote?
Up to you.
Then I'll move on. Opioid 1237, 108, zero requested. That moves us on to, looks like pre-trial diversion or pre, pre-trial deferral.
That's just his account.
Just his account.
I don't think.
Thank. Diversion, diversion and deferral. Thank you. Looks like it's flat from last year. Uh, increase for employee group health insurance. Any questions? No, entertained with the motion.
I get, the, the increase in health insurance is because somebody's taken insurance or?
Yes, that, that's, the, the statute and the ordinance say that, that all costs related to administration are to come out of that fund. That's one of the allowed uses, both per statute, IPAC guidelines and our local county ordinance. So that's, that's part of it.
I'm looking at claims. Uh, it looks like in '24, you had 122,000 requested and adopted. Last year, there was none requested. Now we're back to. Oh, flip-flop from other supplies.
Other supplies.
Okay, that makes sense now why the total was even. Thank you, Mr. Auditor. Okay. Any questions, concerns, motions?
Motion to approve the 200s and 300s, or actually, there's just 200s.
Mm-hmm. There's a motion from Mr. Keel to approve the 200s.
Second.
Second from Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
6-1. That looks, is that everything? 137.
137.
There it is.
What is the?
The.
Here's that. Reduction in prosecuting attorneys. Your budget request is 10,000 less than last year.
In.
12,000.
So, yes.
Deputy prosecuting attorneys.
If it's 143974, now it's 131.
Yes.
974.
Just trying to find ways to, you, reduce spending, move someone over to more 108 functions. So the, things are better aligned to focus on each department with, within existing personnel.
Any further questions? Anybody care to provide a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved of by Mr. Novak for 200s and 300s.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keel. All in favor of approving prosecuting attorney 4D 137?
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Okay.
What's 343?
It's part of 2501. Sorry, it's the location number under 2501.
Do we have another tab for it?
No, it's, you've already looked at it.
Thought so.
Sorry about the confusion.
So that should be everything?
As far as more.
Had the answer ready for you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Savy.
Mr. President, before you get up here, we've asked, I'll wait for these guys to get done, I'm sorry. What'd he say?
No, sir.
Hang on. Are you guys done?
All right.
We've asked before, I know we voted on this thing like 10 times, but it, it keeps rolling back. It's not civil defense anymore. That, that name was changed 10, 10 times already in the past, including when Mrs. Winski was doing this job.
Can we change the title?
Can we change the title?
For.
Civil Defense is not so, we voted on this.
We will be more than happy to find a new title.
Thank you.
We had to change the general title also, and so now it's general.
Over 10 years, they're still bringing it up, so.
Where is it in the vote though? What? What's under 153? It's a civil defense. 153?
Actually, it sounded better. So before they get going, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Mr. Yagelski, go for it.
Yes, thank you. So I know that there's some talk about emergency management without being funded by the federal government and being somewhat restrictive. I don't know what exactly the president got across, but have you, has anything come up with? Because it's very important across us, because you know, your money, of course, comes from that, from those funds. Have you any update on that?
There has not been any update on our, as far as the salary ordinance or, you know, from FEMA, so not as of yet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Could you give an update? We had a conversation at one of the meetings. Give an update on, and I get, it might be FEMA's proposal on how they're going to handle disasters up and forward? Just to give everybody an idea of if there's going to be funding.
Right. So right now, if there's a national or federal declared disaster, FEMA takes up 75%. The locals pick up 25. So the proposal is what's going, right now is FEMA would actually flip that and make the locals pick up 75% and FEMA would pick up 25%.
Was that in the bill that was passed? Or is that something?
It's something that's coming down, it, it's coming down the pipe. That's what they're proposing.
But it's not official yet.
Not yet.
It hasn't.
So right now, they're still under the same old, the, the way they've been running before. So the state of Indiana has a disaster that's on the president's table that hasn't, you know, from back in the spring. They did a statewide disaster and it still hasn't been signed, so we're still waiting on that.
The Texas one, the Texas one is still 75, 25, so it hasn't changed yet.
Right.
So Texas flood. But we're just concerned about this year, what was, how it's going to affect us, so.
But in the future, it could be that we have a national disaster, we're going to be on.
Yeah, it could be flipped the other way. Yeah, it could be flipped the other way. As far as our salary, like I said, we, you know, 50% of our salary is reimbursed through that grant, so to speak. I haven't seen the new grant for 2025 come out yet, so it usually comes out in the fall, around September, October, so.
What's this?
There hasn't been anything that said they're not going to do it, so.
What's the source of that grant? Is that a state or federally funded grant?
It's federal, it comes through FEMA and goes through the state, state manages it.
All right, any further general questions?
I just, yes, keep us posted if anything changes with those grants.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll be on top of it, believe me.
Which is, which line is the tower expenses, the sirens? Or is that the?
The, the tower expenses is for, um, the radio towers, the one out in Kingsbury and the one in, uh, Rolling Prairie, that's to pay for the, the, um, electric and the propane for the backup generator.
Maintenance and repairs is sirens?
Yes.
24,000.
So.
We know it's way underfunded.
Correct, um, yeah, but, I mean, we're, at some point we're going to have to make a decision on how we want to do this. I know every time we go to work on a siren, it just seems like that we find more problems when we get into it and start repairing them. The last siren we just got a bill for was for 5,500 to, uh, that batteries actually blew up in there, they had to replace the battery box and the chargers and it, and it was up, one up on a pole that, um, you know, we couldn't actually get to, we had, had to have a, um, high lift truck to get to it, so, um, yeah, it's just, like I said, they're just, you know, one thing after another.
It was a highly contested issue, we talked about this down AIC, but some people, because of the phones and the technologies out there, isn't still well needed yet compared to what we already have, so.
Yeah.
It's going to be a major change and we're, we don't, do we invest millions, millions of dollars into old antiquated systems or not?
I mean, with looking at all the things with the rave systems and whatnot, it's definitely worthwhile considering, the thing is that we currently are kind of on the hook when it comes to Indiana code because we've already got the infrastructure, now we're required to maintain it. Until we can get that changed due to the antiquated infrastructure, we're kind of stuck. Well, I mean, the only way you would be able to get away from that is have to do away with them and take them down, I, I would imagine. Right, and that would be the code that has to be manipulated or modified from state.
Where's there a statute that says we have to maintain?
When we were, when we did the siren survey, we actually found there's, that there's code that discusses those structures, those systems, and says that once they're up, the county is up to maintaining it.
So first of all, I just made it clear, this, we've acquired some of this stuff, but this was taken care of by the, by the local municipalities, townships, this was not a county, so in other words, we never took the ownership of this yet, this is still by them, so I understand, but of course, as you guys know, they're talking about getting rid of the townships anyway, so it's all up to question, but no, it wasn't, it wasn't the county that maintained those. And I know we've argued about this before, that it was budgeted for them to pay for that.
The county's been maintaining them for a while.
Okay. I mean, with the, with the new technology, speaking of new technology, you know, with our cell phones, they do have the red weather radios that are, that are available, um, those are 25, 30 bucks a piece, I mean, it would be almost worth to have those and pass them out than, you know, spend the money on the sirens at some point.
That's right.
Those are, actually, if you look at all the warnings that are put out by the National Weather Service, the first thing they put on there is do not rely on outdoor sirens. Um, I mean, if you're sleeping at night, you know, if you're not right by one, you're not going to hear it, you know? The weather radios are inside your home, as soon as there's an alert that goes off, those beep and make a lot of noise and wake you up and, you know.
Yeah, I've slept through the siren before, but I, which is eight blocks from my house, I do not sleep through the weather radio that.
Right, those are pretty loud, aren't they?
It scares the heck out of you.
The siren did work good for beef cattle show at the fairgrounds, so waking everybody up at 5:50.
We had that like.
Scared the little screams through the.
Well, wasn't it, uh, yeah, the fairgrounds of all times for it to malfunction, but I think part of the problem with that though is, um, those sirens are still on the old radio system where it's kind of like the old two-tone pager that the fire departments use, and there's still departments around the area, I mean, as far as like Michigan and Illinois and that, that use that system, and I think sometimes with the atmosphere, it just bleeds over and those sirens pick it up and it trips them. That's the only explanation I can come up with, because we're not the only ones that happens, too, it happens in Porter County, they have the same sirens.
Right.
And their sirens go off.
Can you share that siren study with?
Yes.
Any member up here that doesn't have it?
Yeah, anybody wants, I know.
I've got a copy.
I've got a copy.
You probably don't have one.
I know.
So I get.
I can find her.
It's pretty comprehensive.
And then if, if you supply it to me, I'll get it to everybody.
Okay.
We need to have a, I don't want to call it a committee.
Workshop?
Workshop.
Working group.
Ad hoc. A fellowship ad hoc, ad hoc, sits around and talks about emergency preparedness for the county, because we do need it, whether it's sirens, the rave, or whatever it is, we need to make sure that we're, we're doing as much as we can for everybody in the county so that.
Correct.
Get alerted, so.
And that's one of the reasons why I suggested maybe at some point we, you know, purchase some, uh, weather radios and we can, you know.
You get your supply now, just out of your budget, or you get a grant?
Um, we had, um, when I came into this office, there was, I don't know, several boxes of them that were stored, and we've been passing them out, I think we're down, we're not, we don't have too many left, maybe five or six left.
We changed over the radios, we bought some additional ones at, at the time, we switched to 800 megahertz or anything.
Well, these are, these are just little.
Yeah, these are the weather radios that go in your home.
Weather radios, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they came from.
We need to see about.
I mean.
Doing something with funding that with some of the different accounts we have.
Um, yes.
All right. So speaking of accounts, let's move to his budget. Looking at it, it looks like everything's in line with your request for last year except for dues, increase for district dues to maintain equipment.
Correct.
District dues to maintain equipment, that seems.
Why?
So, um, we pay, I think it's 3,000 every year, um, it goes to, Porter County maintains all our equipment, all our district equipment, and that's just kind of maintenance, and with the, I guess the fees and stuff going up on equipment and stuff, they just requesting all the counties to that.
So there's, there's a big rapid response trailers and all.
Right, right. So we've got, there's generators, I mean, some of the, the stuff that I came to before about, uh, you know, getting the truck to pull the trailers, those are some of the trailers that we have access to, the, um, the communications truck or the command truck, um, we use that quite a bit.
Okay.
So, but I mean, that's, goes towards that maintenance and keeping those up. I know they had, during COVID, um, the generator went out in the communications truck and it took them about three years to get that fixed, um, so it was quite a lengthy process and, but anyway, we, that's what it's for.
Okay. Motion to approve the 2 and 300 accounts, there is a 400 account on here.
It's statutory, we looked it up because I looked at it and said, it's got to be a 300 count, it's still an expense account, it just needs to be treated as that number, that account number, so I would please approve that as well.
I'll approve the 2, 3, and 4.
Motion to approve 2, 3s and 4s out of Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. That it? Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Take a quick break.
We were just getting ready to cut this.
Oh, just. Wouldn't mind pausing Alco for a moment? Thank you.
Good.
All right. So we're back live. Mr. Jeremy Sobaki, how are you?
Doing good.
Let's go to Parks and Recreation.
I just talked to him.
Find it. You know what, don't wait on me, fellows, if you've got questions, go right ahead.
You added overtime to your?
I did, and, and we've needed that for a while, but it's, we, we did away with our caretaker position who, um, was taking care of the rental hall on the weekends and all of that, it's a cost-saving measure, but it's, um, just, it wasn't a good situation. You know, it was good for a long time, had been since before I was there, but we were, we had a, a house on the property and he was living in it, and I just don't think the county, our board doesn't think the county should be liable if something happened down the road, so, um, but he took care of the plowing and cleaning on the weekends, um, we can't, our guys, you know, I can't, I don't feel like I should ask them to plow, come in and plow every weekend and things like that without some kind of incentive other than making, making them take, um, comp time. So my, my thought was that if, if we could give them a little bit of, of overtime money, that would be great if, if it was able to be done.
Who's living in the house now?
Nobody now.
Extra cost for the county?
What's that?
Is that an extra cost for the county to maintain that, just to keep it?
The house?
Yeah.
The idea is we'll be tearing that house down. That was part of the problem was, it needs siding, it needs roof, it needs windows, it's, it's in, in pretty bad shape, so, um, it, that was the decision, the park board and us, you know, right now we, we don't have anything on in it and it's, it's pretty rough.
And when Jeremy's talking about the liability issue, that's more the quality of the house and whatnot and what we'd have to put back into it, so.
Yeah. And, and you know, that, like I said, every weekend they, they took care of cleaning the, the hall, the rental hall there at Red Mill, and that's, that's something we're having to pick up, you know, because of this, but, um, and I actually, if you look, I asked to increase the seasonal budget by, uh, whatever that comes to, about $6,300 to cover that, that would be pretty much every weekend. It takes a couple hours every, every weekend day to do that.
And you put a charging station in for your electric vehicle?
Yeah, yeah, we put.
Your funds?
Um, so there's a public charging station at Creek Ridge, and that was for, that was through that grant that we got for the trucks. We got two, um, private charging stations, for lack of a better word, one is at Creek Ridge inside a building and the other is at Red Mill outside, you know, for, for my truck when I go to work, you know, when I'm in the office, I plug in, so. And those were out of, yes, we paid for those out of, out of our funds. Also, this year we put in an air conditioning unit, heating and air conditioning unit at Red Mill out of our non-reverting funds, and we also put in a generator at Red Mill now, so we're, we're set up to where we won't be out of power anymore.
Those charging stations, they're not publicly available, they're just for your guys' staff?
The one, the one is publicly available, the other two are for our vehicles only.
Gotcha.
And the one that's public, we, we do charge, we just got that up and running a couple weeks ago, haven't seen much use yet, but, um, we do charge for that, so it's not like we're just giving away electricity.
Gotcha.
Okay. Overall, it looks like you've got about 20, no.
16.
16,000 dollar reduction?
Yeah, um, I, you'll notice a lot of those funds I moved around, we do, as you know, our, and I explained it in here, but for the public, anybody, we do most of our repairs in-house, so we're not hiring a bunch of people, and, and it's always been more heavy on the, um, the, the 300 accounts than it was the, the 200, if I'm, you know, the, um, we do, we need more money in supplies rather than services because of the staff I have and we're able to do all that, those things in-house, so that's why there's so much money moved around from last year.
No, makes a lot of sense.
So.
Approve the 2 and 3s.
Motion approved 2 and 3s out of 155 from Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler. Moving on to Park Non-Reverting 259.
Yeah, so that.
Basically move 2,500 out of other supplies and into other services and charges. Is that what I'm reading here?
Yeah, it, that's just to have something to start with in case we have refunds we have to give back or, or, you know, at the beginning of the year when we don't have money that's coming in, and that, this isn't money that I'm asking for essentially, it's money being moved from one year to the next in our non-reverting supplies, I'm not asking for money from the council for this, just be able to start with a fund.
Second. Motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you much.
You want to talk about his capital asset plan, or we just going to?
We can, if you want to discuss it. Do we need this year, I mean?
Um, I mean.
He's got a vehicle, he's.
Yeah, I got a couple vehicles that I would love to get replaced, and I know I just got two vehicles, but just remember those vehicles took us like two and a half years to get through that grant, so I, you know, those, I tried to get a couple years ago and, and we were, uh, and then, so we just got them this year, but there are a couple vehicles there, one is a, a 2012 Chevy, um, that one is, is still operationable, but it's our main, um, snowplow, one of our main snowplows that, you know, so if it goes down, we would be in a situation there. The other one is, uh, my maintenance foreman's vehicle, he, he drives quite a bit, you know, obviously running from park to park, and it's got over 100,000 miles on it currently. The only, the other thing that, that really, really we need to get done is, is the paving out at Creek Ridge that I have on there, uh, it's, it's starting to get to where we're patching it pretty regularly, just by hand and trying to, trying to keep, keep it not bad on the way out.
Creek Ridge, yeah.
What's that? Okay.
We did the one at, um.
Red Mill. Red Mill, yep.
Mr. Yoski.
I understand the statements and I. Thank you, I understand the statements and sometimes you, I don't know why people are expressing this way, but, you know, um, the truck's got 100, 100 and what, just 100,000 miles on it?
It's at 101 right now, currently, but.
I got 150 on mine, I'm not, I'm not going to get excited right now.
Yeah, and I'm not either, but we don't, we have a total of six vehicles and.
Understand, but I, I only have two vehicles in my house, so my wife's in mine, so I have the same restrictions as a lot of people do, so I don't, I don't understand what's saying it's got 100, 100,000 miles and not nothing for a truck.
It's, it's a plan, is the way I would put that, is we need to have it, we need to have it on our radar because he'll put 20,000 to 30,000 miles on it.
She has a lighter stand.
So you talked to the, um, charity and maybe the commissioners about getting the, paving out there for next year's, on next year's schedule?
Um.
Maybe they could incorporate that in the.
I, yeah, I talked to them about it to begin with, just to talk to Reeve Riley to see what kind of costs and things like that, um, but yeah, I mean, if that's, if we can get on their schedule, that'd be great.
Realistically, and I appreciate the fact that we've got this in our book this year, before we finalize this budget, it's probably worthwhile going through, highlighting some items, you know, today and tomorrow as we speak to the different groups, and then having a follow-up before we finalize the budget. Is anybody opposed to that? Thanks.
Well, and I, I appreciate being able to submit this, these things, because we, we have always had a plan, you know, a five-year master plan and a, a long-term plan. The, the biggest thing for me was those, where's the fund, you know, asking where the funds are, some of it we might be able to pay for out of our non-reverting, like the air conditioning units and stuff like that, I fully believe we can, as long as we're not doing it all at once and we don't have an emergency, we can try to plan for that and save some money up, which is what we've been doing with like the generator and the furnace and air conditioner at Red Mill and things like that, so those are things we try to do, but, um, yeah, it's kind of hard to.
The paving, we might be able to.
Yeah. Add in, so. Yeah, comparatively, it's a pretty small project, you know, but.
Especially if they're in the area, so.
All right.
Thank you for putting the effort into preparing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
EMS.
Feel the same.
What, where do we start?
Do you actually feel stressed coming to see us guys?
I actually do not. I actually look forward to it.
Well then, let's turn it up a notch for them.
I can give you the quick cliff notes. The only changes were step increases on the 100 accounts and maintenance contracts.
Don't sell yourself short of being reduced at paramedics, right? Not step decreases, I guess, right?
Correct. So yeah, seniority losses. Currently, we're down to paramedics and have been for a little while. We have people put in apps and I've never understood this. They take the time to fill out the apps, take the phone call, oh yeah, you know, we want to interview, and then they just don't show up for the testing or, you know. We've had, I think, three of those here recently. Full staffed other than the two medics, so. That's kind of why the overtime's always kind of a moving target. We have two military personnel. I think one on FMLA or on workman's comp right now that's been prolonged, having surgery on the shoulder. One FMLA, three or four on intermittent FMLA. So we've stretched the 75 that we came for back in March, April, March, I think, into March. I kind of foresee September, October needing additional, but we're trying to shell game it a little bit, you know, with these stripping salaries from the two open positions and some of that to stretch it as far as we can. But we usually seem to be right between that 125 and 150,000 of additional every year for the overtime.
Just curious, credit bureau fees?
So it's kind of a hit and miss thing too. Our collections company was not doing very well for us, so therefore we didn't spend a lot out of that. However, we told them, listen, we're not happy with what you're doing. We're looking for somebody else. I actually spoke to Guy DiMartino, it's kind of in his wheelhouse, and he gave me some names. But since I told them we were looking, now they've kind of kicked it in gear and are doing what they should be doing. So we even shopped it around for rates. There's still a better rate than the other company. Kind of the same thing with the maintenance contract stuff. You know, our software for our reporting software went up 10%, but it's still about 30% cheaper than the next guy. So the maintenance stuff is, I hate to say it is what it is, but.
And no vehicles in the budget for next year?
No ambulances and that was, you've got the elephant memory here, 22 or something, 23 when we were. Now, on the Capitol Outlay, it was part of our replacement to replace a Tahoe next year, but that would traditionally be something that I come and ask for.
Why wouldn't you put that in your?
Because it wasn't formally approved, so.
In your 26 request on your.
It is on the, I didn't put it as a line item, but. We are looking, just as we've discussed previously, starting in 27 with the remounts. So basically, just a quick recap of that is they take the box off the chassis, put it on a new chassis, they sand everything down, repaint it, redo electrical, replace lights as needed. If they're still working, then they use the same. But I mean, it's a savings of at least 100,000 to remount versus purchase new. So we'll have, you know, as on the Outlay Plan, I think we have one in early 27 and if they could fit it in, maybe a second. But right now, just the one. I think I'm a little high at 250,000 for that, but I'd rather throw it a little high at you guys than low.
It's a pleasure. Do you want to look at it in the budget?
It should probably. It should probably go into lit public safety, right?
Just reflects that increase in the maintenance contracts.
You want a motion?
I'll take a motion.
Just doing EMS 140 or you wanted?
We'll start with EMS 140 so we can keep, so we don't have a bunch jumping around for the others.
EMS 140, I'll make a motion to approve the 200s and 300s.
I have motion from Mr. Keel to approve the 200s and 300s out of EMS 140.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour. Any further discussion? That'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So lit public safety.
To get the discussion rolling, I'll make a motion to approve lit public safety 140 with, under vehicles, your amount for that Tahoe.
75, 75,000.
75,000 under the vehicles for the Tahoe.
That's for the vehicle, the equipment, lighting install.
A whole shebang.
The whole shebang.
Make sure we cut that for the minutes later. All right, motion by Mr. Keel to approve the twos, threes and four hundreds, since this is a 400 account?
Yes, on a lit public safety.
On a lit public safety, including $75,000 for proposed Tahoe and equipment.
461.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Discussion? Okay. We had problems with Tahos rotten out in the past.
Correct. So kind of to Mr. Sabey's point, even the trailers that we have, our enclosed trailers, are probably a bit heavy to be pulling with a Tahoe. So I would like to look at maybe transitioning to some 2500s. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I did base that 75,000 off of switching vehicles.
So that takes care of the transmission portion of it. You also had one that was relatively new where the whole floorboards were.
Same vehicle.
Same vehicle?
Yeah. And so the one that is, would replace next year is the sister to that vehicle with, it hasn't had the transmission issues, but it's got the same floorboard issue.
So we're not going to have yourself and Brian running Fred Flintstone with, to propel that?
Well, I mean, I can't guarantee anything, but.
All right.
We're going to try to avoid that.
All right. Any concerns, questions?
I mean, my concern is if money gets tight, this is something that's maybe, does this vehicle absolutely need to be replaced?
I mean, the floorboards, pretty well gone in the rear of it and it's got a floor mat over it right now, but I mean, it functionally.
Just out of curiosity, I'm going to follow up with yours if you don't mind.
No, please.
You can buy drop-in floor mat pants. I mean, if that's the case, if that's not, if that's the only thing that's on the car that you're talking about, they're drop-ins, that's all they are.
Okay.
I just didn't mean to interfere with you, sorry.
No, not at all.
At least look into it, please.
Sure.
All right.
Just to confirm, when we vote on this, we're approving him to buy a Tahoe for $75,000?
I'm not voting, don't worry about it.
I'm saying, that's what this is.
And just so you guys know, because you brought it up with the sheriff, we do have a grant out right now for 128,000 to look at starting to replace some radios and that's an avenue we're going to go down. Is anything we can throw out? We got a, how much was the training grant?
We got one for $10,000 and we got one for 11,340.
So we're trying to use those. There's the, a big EMS conference in Indianapolis this year and we're going to use that training money to be able to send some of our people to that for classes that are, it's kind of a, it's never been in Indianapolis. It's usually a destination like Nashville, Las Vegas, you know, who wants to go to Indianapolis? I mean, compared to those places, but it's a great opportunity, but we found ways to not spend county money for it, you know.
Do you have, are the radios anywhere in your, in your?
No.
Can you, and I meant to ask the sheriff though, can you put together how many radios you got and everything?
100 on the nose is what we have right now between, and so this is, to the sheriff's point, what doesn't make sense to me from Motorola is, well, the portables are into life, but the mobiles, we don't have a replacement for that yet, so those are okay. Well, what sense does that make? If those are still okay, why aren't the portable? So we met with Motorola and flat told them, y'all are pricing yourself right out of this game. So we're, you know.
Other departments are even looking over and.
As are, as are we, as are we. It's just, it's ridiculous.
Can you put together though a?
Sure.
Kind of a cost thing that we need to look at?
Yep.
Okay. So for call, I've got a motion by Mr. Keel, second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor of approving lit public safety for 140?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. Yep. It's along the lines of, still concerned about the overall lifing and studies of the vehicle, but I understand the need.
Yeah, I do like the timing of this, where there's larger vehicle expenditures that you have coming up in future years, so this kind of levels those out.
Where we try to stagger that, yeah.
Make sure you turn your microphone on. They just got to notice.
Mine's on.
Mine's on.
Mine's on.
You're on the line, here. Mr. Novak.
Okay, so any other business?
Not if you don't have any.
I don't.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you want to start off, Mr. President?
Well, before, actually, if you don't mind, because I think it's going to be a great segue for you. So a while back, we had a meeting with the judges and we talked about collections of user fees and things like that for frequent flyers and different ways to assure that we're not having to give you $70,000 and turn around and have to give you another 270 before June or some number like that. And I figured that might be a question you're going to have today, so why don't we just start off, do you have any concerns or any?
No, I appreciate you getting back to the judge. I was going to ask something because I know that we, the last couple of years, we're kind of messed up because we didn't get that grant, so on and so forth. Wasn't applied for properly, whatever, the story's going to be told on it. But I know you're on the sixth month and you're not, at the end, your grant starts in July, right, or June?
We get approved in July.
You get approved in July, so how do, how do we stand now with the grant?
We got the exact same amount that we got last year.
Okay.
We're going to be 200,000 short again.
Correct.
Okay, so with that reference, is that something that's common across the state? Because, you know, one time we had all our vehicles, we had everything that was covered under that grant and I know that now, a lot of that stuff's been cut out.
Our grant only covers our salaries and very little, that's it.
Salaries?
Everything in the grant is just for salaries. Everything else is covered by project income.
Is that, is that pretty normal in the state of Indiana that you've seen?
Well, it just depends on what you want to use it for. You can use the grant for other things, but then somebody else would have to subsidize the salaries.
Okay, that's more or less my reference to the question. I mean, is there, are we getting, not you, not your community, but are we getting the full amount of money that we should be getting? I mean, is other people helping out with this grant, asking for additional funds?
We are at our max. They have a formula that they use to give different counties money and we are at our max.
I was talking before you, the numbers were a lot higher, so those must have just went down across the state then. Because we, I'm talking about before, years ago, we had higher amounts that were coming from community corrections. But apparently, it just, they're just not paying out as much they used to.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
I understand, I'm just asking. So that was, I just wondered if we were at the maximum of the grants, because I did see like over the years, they've declined, not during your administration, I know. Thank you.
No problem.
Go ahead while you're at it, go ahead, tell me how you feel about the other.
Well, the one thing that I think came out of that was we were talking about reinstituting some level of collections agent and those sorts of things. Has there come up with your board at all?
We don't have our board meeting until August 18th.
Okay, so look forward to hearing something sometime after the 18th. So obviously sometime to discuss it and then if there's any research related to it afterwards, then sometime after there. Thank you. So looking at your field officer, reduction about $4,000, I'm assuming that's just due to seniority?
Correct.
Okay. Same goes for residential officer in the opposite direction. And then maintenance contracts, those went up 1,006, 70, 677.
We have our tech 84, which is our scanner, which individuals come in and that contract usually goes up every year a couple hundred dollars. And we also have our Lexi pole contract, which is the individuals who are over our policies and procedures. And we have not received that bill yet for this year, so I'm not sure. It's in September, we usually get that bill, so we're not sure if that one has gone up or not. But the scanner bill does go up considerably yearly, it seems like.
Okay. Any further questions from the council?
Mr. President, you just brought up about collections and I know that's been discussed for years with them paying their, you know, I guess it's kind of a, I don't know, I just can't understand, it's a work release center, they're out there to work and then they don't pay their fair share. Not all of them, but most of them evidently. And I know the other, I guess the argument on the other side is, well, they'd be in jail and they'd be costing us money in jail. Well, they're costing us money out there too. And the thing of it is, is I think if we, if the judges would start putting them in jail, if they're not working, then they, I think the word would get around pretty quick that, hey, you know, it's not a free ticket out there, better get a job or have a job and work and pay your, pay your fair share. That's my feeling.
So one thing that came up during the judges' meeting that we attended, and I think Mr. President can add in here, the big listening thing that came up from all of them was the fact that there's a different community of judges that we have now with the level of organization with all of them. Prior to somewhere between Judge Osas startup and Judge Havens, now they have a regular meeting that they include and I think, is your group included regularly or is that just as needed?
As needed.
As needed. And this case was in as need. And when we discussed it, I was looking more for systemic, a system-supported process that allowed the judges to see, wait a minute, they have an outstanding balance with community corrections for somebody that might be what we'll call a frequent flyer, somebody that comes across their courts on a regular basis. And if there's not, you know, I'm going to ask for some correction on the term, basically when it comes to a bond deferment, basically if there's no bond deferment filed where it says that the bond on that particular person is destined to the attorney, then the judge can make a judgment in terms of that bond deferment first be distributed to community corrections in order to address that balance. That way that starts to take care of it within the system without necessarily having issues related to somebody's judgment being successfully completed because they have the ability to afford it. And that's what they have to deal with on a regular basis and that's part of the system. And to your point, we have the, they'd be costing us a whole lot more in the jail administrative costs and housing and food and whatnot, medical on a regular basis. And I heard several examples where there was times where we had to, we as a county or we as a judicial system, so I'm using that a little bit loosely because I'm not part of the judicial system, having to make decisions on jail versus community corrections for the sake of costs, based in balance with whatever the offense is. So they've got a, they've got a knife edge to kind of navigate with that, but I think with the added systems, with the increased, you know, use of collections, we'd be in a much better shape than where we are this year. Good. At least my opinion, as long as all efforts support, are supported by the discussion.
And how was the judge's response to you? And they knew it was coming, I know they did, because they called me, trust me. But how was the judge's response to you?
Positive, very positive. But yet, they weren't going to cut me short as being in there just for financial reasons when it comes down to also dealing with, you know, not having increased civetism. Thank you. My first language is math, okay? All right. Any further discussion? No problem.
Thank you for that explanation.
All right, so we're here to talk about budgets and any further discussions on 179? That'll entertain a motion.
Real quick question if you don't mind, household institutional, what is that? Real quick question, if you don't mind, household institutional, what is that? 1122, 2026.
You're on the next page.
Oh, sorry.
You're in 590.
I apologize.
Never mind, quick jump to page.
You can ask that here in a second.
I'll just leave it right where it's at, then, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. So any, anyone willing to toss out a motion for 179?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Two hundreds and three hundreds?
Two hundreds and three hundreds.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pressel, second by Mr. Keel, any further discussion? With that, all in favor?
Nate. He didn't ask for the nays yet. I don't care.
He wants to move along. All right, jumping to lit public safety 179, not 590. All 100s. Any discussion regarding the 100s? Let's go to 1122, 590.
I guess the same question at that point, then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Household institutional line.
That was for the GPS units, that additional 200,000. In '23, we were approved, the 200,000 by the council. In '24, when I asked for it for year '25, we put it on our budget. But between the budget hearings and what was approved, it was not approved. That's why I essentially had to come back before you at the beginning of the year.
It fell off.
It fell off?
No, I'm just saying.
Okay, so this year, we put it in the budget so that it could be discussed. So if it's not approved this year, we'll be coming back in '26 at the beginning of the year to say, hey, this is what we need.
I guess I'm a little confused. Mark, your original question was about household institutional.
That's what I was trying to.
Well, maybe it's.
So we're looking at 1122, 2026.
Oh, that's project income?
I don't.
Yes, we're on the 1122, 590. Is that project income?
I thought you said lit, I'm sorry.
No, we started with lit, but it's all 100 accounts, so we don't, we're not gonna make any motions on that right now.
So the account with 226 is on household institutional?
Those are like cleaning supplies, anything that has to do with the upkeep of the facility. We can utilize that account for.
So we didn't expand zero dollars out of that?
I'm sorry.
We didn't expand zero dollars out of that?
No, we, I think we just put everything in our business supplies.
So maybe we could straighten that out a little bit, I'm just.
Well, I believe these transitions, transactions are through April. They're through May? Okay.
It's okay.
They're basically taken out of another account, so. So what's the other account, I'm sorry, that you're taking, that you're kind of intermixing these things? You mentioned some other account. Set of institutionals, household institutional, you mentioned another one.
Oh, like business supplies?
Where's that at?
Office supplies?
Office supplies, okay.
They're kind of interchangeable, actually.
Well, you also bumped up office supplies from 6,000 to 9,000. Now granted, you had 9,000 previously in 2024, but you only expended 4613 in 2024, which is why we bumped it down to 6,000, and currently you're at just under 2,000.
I think we're gonna have two computers that may need to be swapped out next year.
That doesn't come out of this account.
Yeah.
That doesn't come out of this account, so I.
Let's take it back to, I mean, I don't.
Take it back to zero.
Take it back to.
Let it come out of the other account.
Did you prepare like a capital projects plan for your department?
Yes, we do. We worked with the auditor's office where we had that, a list of cycling out different.
Okay. Okay. No worries. Or maybe it's in another one somewhere.
I'm not gonna make the motion, but it's up to you if you want to do it. I don't see any, if she's winning out another account, she's probably just zero that one out.
Either zero that one out or.
Or lower down.
Lower that one back down to six. I mean, it's not a lot, you know, every little bit helps.
So far, we haven't done.
What have you got? Anyone?
Well, if we've already got the lineup in maintenance and repairs, and there's room there, I'd say drop office supplies back down to six. I mean, your, two-year average is 4,600, 1,900 as of right now, so.
Maybe drop the other one to 1,000?
Household to 1,000.
So motion is clearly.
Drop office supplies back to six and drop household institutional to 1,000.
And that's approving two hundreds and three hundreds?
Yes.
Question from Mr. Rosenbaum, the 2024 expend numbers. Sorry, 2024 expend numbers, is that the full year of 2024 or 2024 up to this point? The full year? Okay, I agree with the motion, but I just want to point out that the, the average there, or you're one of those columns, the 2025 expend, we're looking at five months of data.
Right, correct.
And if one is.
Yeah. Yeah. But even at that, you're 1,900 for five months of the year. So, you know, I think you're, you're not even a third, or you're just at a third of the way to your six.
Yeah, that sounds.
Through five months, so that'd make sense that you stay under that six.
All right, so I have the motion. I thought I heard the second down here, was that Mr. Mullenhour? All right. Any further discussion?
Question, and maybe this is because it's split into a different fund. I'm looking at lease agreements and it's 150,000, but previously it was in the 200s. Is it split somewhere else?
We ended up making an additional appropriation of that. That was the location devices, the GPS and whatnot, the user fees stuff that we're talking about for collections.
But that's not short, then?
It is.
It is short.
It's gonna be short next year.
Yeah, 150 is short for our GPS units. Last year, we were only allowed to put 70,000 in, and this year, we put 150 in.
So you're gonna come back to us and ask us for more money, invariably.
Unless you, if you don't approve the lit account that we asked for.
She's asking for, she's got a split in lit for 590.
So the rest of the money is in lit. So if we approve it both here and in lit, then you're covered.
Correct.
You're on the wrong page, 590 lit. One more. There you go.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I would just mention that, I know this is, nobody's gonna like it on the other side, but never mind. If you approve all of these, the monitoring, then there's no, there's no, the judges, like, they're trying, you know, of course, handle a little bit.
Motivation.
Motivation.
Incentive.
You can always, always can unappropriate it, too.
I'm just saying, you should offer some incentive under this program, just gonna throw it out there to you, that's all. If it doesn't come up, if it doesn't come up, it goes blind, and nobody pays attention.
And that's the 210 that's in line nine? So with that, is anybody interested in it? Is that considered a friendly suggestion?
Suggestion.
I think the. The motion was for approving 200s and 300s out of community corrections, 1122, 590.
Correct.
Correct.
That still stands, and then we'll address the, the rest of the amount in lit public safety 590.
I guess where I take that is, is if we're gonna modify anything, I'd recommend that we modify it out of general instead of modifying it in lit.
Good idea. Was confusing for them also.
Yes. Already did general, this is.
We haven't approved it. We haven't approved 590 in general. We have motion, we're in discussion, we've got a motion.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the 590, the community corrections, 1122, 590, that's on a fund 1122, that's not general.
Oh, that's, you're right.
That's your, that's your.
Project income, so that's all state income.
So all good, then?
Yeah, all good. Still gotta approve it, so then we look at it out of lit. Okay, any further discussion? Then I'll call for the vote. Motion to approve 200s and 300s with the modifications in office supplies and household institution, taking them down to 6,000 and 1,000 respectively. Motion approved by saying aye?
Aye.
Nate.
Thank you. All right, now lit public safety 590. So to, as a follow-on to the previous discussion, we have $210,000 requested out of lease agreements, which has, which supports entirely GPS monitoring, right? Same stuff was out of the same one before.
Correct. And may I add this?
Absolutely.
Coming out of our meeting, I met with the judges also separately from the council, and they are working with community corrections as far as addressing the fees. We are now able to send over a sheet that lets them know if somebody has a balance, and they are addressing those issues in court. So I just want you to know that it didn't fall on deaf ears, that they are working.
Fantastic, that's good to hear.
I meant on my conscience, we have to keep that incentive going because it felt the last couple of years away from it. So I think it's good we're heading in the right direction, though we're not doing it.
We're sending that monthly.
Good.
Good. Again, I was asking for, you know, not a person-based system, you know, administrative. It is, but it's not, right? You have a queue of a regularly occurring event that keeps folks updated and where that balance is, to where they can report that on. I remember that she mentioned it before, but Judge Osso mentioned the information sheet, basically, that covers the, call it the background separate from the police report or whatever the case may be. So they carried that information, they had a field for it, so. Okay, so any recommendations regarding lit public safety for 590?
Motion to approve the 300s, because there are no 200s.
As is?
Yeah, as presented.
Motion to approve 300s as presented for lit public safety 590. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor? 75 by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nate.
Nate. You gonna go with three?
Got a team meet down there.
Five, two. All right. Oh, Mullenhour and. Sure, all right. Community correction state, 584. Mm-hmm, these are all grant funds.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I bet it's, we don't really have much to, it's not like we.
We have no influence on it.
Yeah. So we'll get it out of the way.
Motion to approve on the Lexi.
Doesn't matter to me much.
Maybe for consistency's sake.
All right.
Yep. We're gonna hold it over.
Then we'll hold it for, just for curiosity, 9106. It's got 117.5 left in it right now, so.
One question on the community correction state 584. I noticed there's a $70,000 increase in employee group health insurance. What's the backstory there?
The health insurance was messed up last year, and I could not tell you how it was fixed. I just know that when we worked with them this year, we were told that it was a certain amount that we needed, and so that's why it was in there.
Sounds good.
You came to us for fun, then, didn't you?
Yeah, we did.
You don't have any part-time people, do you?
Yes, we do.
How many?
We can have up to 10 people. But I think we have three now.
All right, one more. Again, 100 accounts for lit public safety 584. Any discussion here? Okay. And we'll hold that over. Anything else for us?
No, that was it.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You.
You all have a great day.
You, too.
You wanna have somebody else come in?
Absolutely.
We got a little long break, lunchtime.
Yeah, let's, since we got Hazmat here, we'll pull Hazmat up. We'll ask the recorder to come in early.
Okay.
Because there's enough accounts there to where we're probably gonna discuss that and.
Take it one more if you can.
Try the corner?
Try it.
All right.
See if anybody can get a hold of anybody.
Corner, start out with the recorder for 1115.
The recorder.
Okay, the recorder's done, so corner for 1130, please. Thank you. Even though it's way above your, you know, your job scope. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine.
Good. All right, so we wanna look at.
Your radios in disrepair, too, or your light?
Yeah, they are, but just gonna have to work through it.
Yes, I like that answer.
That's good.
I just ask them, you don't spend much for radios, but I know they come different times of the year, but it's not.
When we've been buying radios, we have not been buying the Motorola's. We've been buying Kenwood, which is a quite a bit cheaper.
Kenwood.
Are they holding up?
Fine.
Good.
So far.
I haven't thrown them against a wall too many times.
After the council meeting?
Motion to approve 174.
Second.
Twos and threes.
Motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Keel, any further discussion? Anybody else want to talk about radios?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Recorder is on the way. Cool. And do we? The right to know, is that also getting approved as part of this?
Right.
It's the next page.
It's the next page in there?
No, you're on it right now.
That's the twos and threes.
Can we do 174?
170.
I thought we approved 174.
Right to know, and then, you know what, I'll make a motion to approve 1152, the right to know.
Second.
As presented, it's the same number.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that the grant? Is that the grant?
Yeah.
Second.
Aye.
Seven.
Wait, wait, what did you say?
Grant, grant, aye.
We have a highlighter out, hang on.
It's a grant.
Yeah, let's.
I had to give a highlighter.
Let's go ahead and pause for a bit. Would you mind muting, darling? Thank you. All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, let's start with recorder 104. Chief deputies, I'm guessing that's a bump due to steps?
The, no, it should be the same as was previously.
It's a dollar.
Actually, it's a.
Shows the dollar difference. I'm gonna say the finger stroke.
Me as well, so we're gonna fix that. Okay.
Saved a dollar.
We saved a dollar, I like it. All right, and first deputies is the same. Nothing else to discuss there unless anybody else has comments about salaries?
Yeah.
Yes.
So in the past, we've switched some of the salaries accounts over. So last year, we reduced it some because the number was going down. I don't know how we stand this year, if that's, if you don't mind, how do we stand? How many people are so far at the county paying, or how many are you paying for?
The county is paying for myself, chief deputy, and first deputy. And then I pay for the second deputy, the archivist, and the part-timer.
We had, we had talked before, and you were worried about the numbers going down too much, but this year, the numbers came back up, didn't they?
No, they really didn't.
You're fine.
They're pretty much flatline.
Beginning of the year, we were 703, we're currently at 676, as in thousands.
Right. If you consider the part-time, or something, something that we can do.
I like it.
I'd like to see one of the, either the, one of the employees go back into the perpetuation fund.
Like.
And then keep an eye on it. If we have to move it next year, we can move it next year.
That's what we did this year, and I think it worked out, so now we can.
Well, my concern is that, you know, if we blow through my perpetuation fund too quickly, then you'll be responsible for more than just one extra salary.
Yeah, we always readdress it. We did, we addressed it last year, and now we're gonna readdress it this year. I think it was a good idea.
Maybe put that first deputy back in there that came out of there. It's what, $53,000? 53,420?
I agree with your conclusion that it's not sustainable in the long term, though probably not problematic for one year.
Okay.
At the reference, we switched, prior to 2024, we had it, we took it out so we can. Because this, we're able to do it back and forth and over and over.
Okay.
We'll keep an eye on it.
Okay, we can add that one.
Okay.
So second deputy added two.
You're good. Yeah.
Mr. Novak, she's asking.
You said, so the, I said the first deputy. I don't see a second.
Oh, the first deputy. The first deputy, okay.
The first, right, the first deputy on 104.
All right.
So add first deputy.
Yeah, so let's. All right. So just so we can keep stuff straight for the auditor's office, am I hearing the workings of a motion for removing the first deputy, 1,000.101.13, from recorder 104?
Yes.
All right, so that's your motion?
That was my motion.
Do I have a second?
And putting it into the recorder perpetuation.
Yeah, I gotta make it in two in order to keep things straight over there. Okay.
Just wanted to make sure they knew where to put it.
And then, do we need to correct that line item, that $1, or was that just a typo? On the chief deputy?
On chief deputy.
She gave the chief deputy a $1 raise.
A $1 raise. Keystroke.
So we don't need to do any, we don't need to.
All right.
That's my motion on the.
It's your motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of moving the first deputy from the general fund 104 to the recorder's perpetuation fund? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
All right. Can I just ask a real quick question? I know, so why aren't these salaries about at least half? They're at, you know, 53,000, we spent $7,000. Okay. Or even some number closer, this is just like a third. This doesn't make any sense, but.
It just some, with the cutoff. Is there a way to change the cutoff, like?
No, it takes almost a month. And we're finding this very hard time, so.
I think they're May.
What are we talking?
Mine's coming in every two weeks. Okay, let's talk about twos and threes on the recorder's perpetuation fund. Slate bump in dues. Moderate bump in mileage, what's going on there?
That's because the mileage seems to never catch up with what I had before. It was always, I had to end up transferring money. So the fact is that that money goes straight back to the perpetuation fund, whatever I don't use. That just saves me the hassle.
No, that's fine. And employee education and training.
Correct. So as you might be aware, that's been an issue. And so as the commissioner's attorney made a suggestion that we have a budget line for education, that way is budgeted, we know what's coming, and that that should solve the issue of not having the funds for conventions and conferences and such. And so I put that item in.
Okay.
At their suggestion.
So you have, obviously, there was some concern earlier, we were talking about salaries coming out of the perpetuation fund versus coming out of the general. Similarly, here, I'm assuming that these are gonna be more frugal decisions related to state called and continuing ed, not necessarily nice to haves.
Correct.
Or the commissioner's rule that they put in place.
Right.
Since they restricted travel.
Correct.
I mean, we still have.
Correct.
Whatever they implemented.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In that reference, again, over the years, we worked really hard to get that, to go in front of them, I don't, in front of commissioners. I still feel comfortable with the decision we had. I guess, if there was politics involved in this, I have no idea, but I'm just saying that I would, I would like to have a central group still in charge of this, but that's just my opinion. It's great for.
I know that in the last four years, commissioners have not paid any of my travel expenses. That doesn't come out of their budget. It's always been coming out of the elected officials.
And yours covers council?
I wouldn't mind as long as you're paying for it, if they would go to.
Certain, the elected officials' fund covers only certain offices. And then the AIC Annual Conference, if there's funds left, then the council can be covered by.
So, but what we're talking about here is perpetuation fund versus elected officials.
Right.
Different. Different funds.
Different funds.
Now, so anytime, we still have to follow what, basically the ordinance, right? Which talks about the approval, but it doesn't talk about funding in terms of where it's gotta come from.
It'd be okay if she's funded, if she funds it, I just, I still would like her to come in front, so that at least people know what's going on, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah. That's still the case, but as they suggested, that we have a budget specifically for that, that's what I did to avoid any misunderstandings in the future.
Understood. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Sounds good.
Do we need to, with moving that employee into the perpetuation fund, do we need to move the group health into there also with it? Doesn't that need to increase?
Right, that will change if we move the one person back to.
That number's gonna change also.
The numbers for the Medicare and all of those will change, correct?
So can I?
We'll recalculate that one bit.
Retroactively go back and amend my motion so that those numbers will reflect accordingly?
So let's be clear on what's going on here, right? So you're gonna, not only are we gonna transfer.
Those are paid out of the commissioners for general.
So they're all paid out of the commissioners, there's no?
Withholdings come out of commissioners' budget for general fund, right?
Correct.
General fund only.
Okay.
Yes.
So we don't.
There's a grant, they pay for it and other things.
This into the perpetuation fund, you'll move all the withholdings into.
Okay, but we don't know what those numbers are today because it's all lumped into the commissioners.
Whatever they are, they're included.
Okay.
Okay.
Needed, if needed.
So you guys will recalculate it then?
Yes. We're gonna recalculate all the 100s, all of the accounts will be. Sorry.
And you also see that I made a change this year. I'll be paying for the software from a different fund. That's something that I was able to do because of the SBOA provided us with information saying that that specific fund can be used for software and basically any kind of electronic access and storage, so. Trying to use that money, because otherwise it cannot be touched in any other way, so.
We're noticing the line item in your perpetuation fund for employee group health insurance dropped from 35,000 to 12,000. What's the recent?
That's because of the change in who is getting the benefits. I have one employee who does not take the insurance through the county, so once that changed, and then there's a new employee, again, the prices change. I checked with the.
But out of the 35,000 for this year, you've already spent 15 of that, so.
Buy more.
That number's gonna have to.
Will, will.
Drop significantly.
We'll clean it up.
That's because things, like I said, from, when I budgeted last year, the employees and the positions they were in, and the budget they were paid out of, were different than what I have right now, and so all that has been moving around.
Does this become a little bit difficult to predict? Because I mean, the employees can choose whether or not to take insurance at a lot of different points in time. Of course, they can do it in enrollment, but if their spouse lost their insurance, they could take it in the middle of the year. How do, how do we reflect that?
That can happen, but if that happens, and as you know, this is from perpetuation fund, hopefully, I'll have enough money in the budget to shift that, because I cannot exceed the amount that's budgeted from the perpetuation fund. That's one thing that the state board of accounts does not allow. Once I have the budget, the amount that's coming out of the perpetuation fund cannot be changed.
We can't do additional appropriations?
No.
Interesting.
I cannot exceed that amount.
So just wondering if maybe the.
So when I budget, this is it.
Maybe the employee group health insurance number should be higher than, because if you don't spend it, it just stays in that fund, like nothing happens.
Yeah.
But there's no way to fix it later with an additional appropriation.
Correct.
So.
But the way state board of accounts looks at it, we put it in different lines. They only care about the total. I don't actually specifically have to do this. This is more for us than what the state board of accounts asks for. They just want to know that I don't exceed the amount that I budgeted.
So essentially, you'd have to come back to us and say, I need to transfer something, let's just say out of other services and charges.
Yep.
Up to, okay.
Absolutely, yep.
Just because it's jumping groups, right? It's jumping from a three to a one.
But it still can be moved, it's just I cannot exceed the total amount. Yep.
And I've got a question on your data conversion.
Correct.
Obviously, in '24, you're at 54,000, you're almost 10,000 increase in that in two years. Do we have an endpoint on the data conversion, or?
Well, I changed this because at the end of the year, so some of the bills come quarterly. My microfilm, my Laredo usage and things like that, so sometimes they don't show up till the end of the year, and then I might get the bill in January. And so instead of having to worry about, okay, I have to pay out of the last year's budget, I just change the amount, and that way it'll just be rolling over, because again, comes out of the same bucket.
Okay.
How many employees do you have?
Five.
Five.
That includes the chief deputy.
And is there any with the, with the new software that I think you went to, that you're using that?
That software, it's been the same one.
With the new program that you implemented where, I guess, if people have requested information, they gotta go to a third party, is that?
No, that's always been there.
They can still call and you're gonna send them stuff? I don't.
He's talking about the change that your office implemented.
Yeah, that was something that was started during COVID when people couldn't come to the office, and it got to the point where it was being excessive. I mean, we would get multiple emails from the same attorneys, same day, again and again, and basically, we would, we cannot drop what we're doing or ignore the customer at the counter, so we can answer the email to attorney, which before the COVID, they either send their secretary, their assistant, or whoever, and they could have done it. Some of them never stopped doing that. Some of them come to the office and just get what they need.
With a lot of the e-recording and everything that's being done with technology, is there any?
Correct.
Is there any?
Well, the SBOA, SBOA doesn't like us to.
Do you see any employees?
What I've learned at the last conference, that SBOA does not want us to send the copies and then charge at the end of the month. And if you want a copy that's $1, then they would have to make a payment every time they make a request. And that's a hassle for everybody, for me and for the attorneys who request those documents. Because if you ask me four times, each time, that same day, you're gonna have to pay me whatever amount the copies are.
So, so.
We're just trying to stay straight with the SBOA.
With the e-filing, aside from that, with the e-filing, with everything, with real estate and the way things work now, everything's electronic.
Correct.
Is there any, do you see in the future eliminated an employee, going down an employee? Because we're looking at reducing, with working smarter and working better, everything isn't like hand ledgers, it's all electronic filing, it's all on a computer, so.
I don't see that happening, especially if we hoped for the market to change and with housing and things coming, with the new development, every time there is a real estate transaction, it has to go through my office.
But it's going through electronically, it's not going through as a piece of paper necessarily.
Yes, but it's. So I wish you guys understood better what we do, but there's times when we get the same.
I've been in your office a lot of times.
I have not seen you once, so.
No, for you, I've said before, because I learned the job. Once I know, I know what you do there, okay? So what Randy's asking about is, there has to be a way with large times that is going to make your job easier.
It makes it.
More efficient, more efficient, not easy, I think easy might be.
All right, more efficient.
Yeah. More efficient.
How about this, fellas?
Unfortunately, we still have humans involved in the process. So we might get the same document multiple times because the attorney will send it to us, and some information is missing, we have to reject it, they send it back, and we have to reject again because they feel like they don't have to, and so. So efficiency is not necessarily the problem on our end, it's our customers.
So at the beginning of this, we talked about, you know, if there's any sort of staffing reductions, it'd be by attrition of some sort, right? Are you forecasting any sort of retirement skin next year?
No.
All right, so at any such point that she has, somebody that leaves the office, at that point, we may wanna, you know, consider it based on some of the concerns up here. Is that fair?
No.
Randy, is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, that's actually.
All right.
Absolutely.
So.
Distracted by my colleague.
Distracted by your colleague. All right, so regarding the recorder's perpetuation fund, any other questions specifically around twos and threes?
Motion to approve with the 53,420 that we, well, we already brought that over, so.
Yep, and the understanding that the withholdings will be adjusted.
Yep, motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pressel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, let's go to recorder's enhanced fund. That's where you had the software moved over.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
Just out of curiosity, where does this money, I mean, it's like a separate fund, but where does this money?
So when we have the fees broken down, it goes to seven different funds, and this is one of them. Because there is the general fund, recorder's perpetuation fund, surveyors' corner, there is the elected officials, there is the public access, and I don't remember what the last one is.
328,000.
There's 386,000 under.
I looked at the wrong end.
Yeah.
I'm guessing this is one of those funds that has a whole bunch of restrictions on it, and it's just never been clear how to use it before, is that?
Exactly.
What's going on here?
Exactly, yeah. It's basically limited to just that. I even have an email from SBOA if you'd like to see how limited it is, so.
Yeah, we've spent, I mean, it looks as though you've spent no money so far.
That's because until now, I didn't know I could. Yeah, like I said, it's so strict that it's difficult to find a way to use it, and so when I finally had something, you know.
So maybe you need to meet with her and find a way to spend.
Well, she already checked into it with SBOA.[1695.80]
No, but there being, this being the case, now I can keep using that fund every year for that same purpose, and that would really.
Something else to use.
Really help.
Yep.
Take it down, so.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion and a second from Mr. Novak and Mr. Keel.
Look at the numbers.
Oh, oh, they did.
Yeah, you're right, they did.
We just remotioned and re-seconded.
We're just supporting your motion.
Backing it up.
All right, so as you said, from Mr. Yagelski and Mr. Pressel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. So let's move on to elected officials training, 1217.
I just kept it the same as last year, didn't make any changes.
I just, as a question, Mr. President.
Yes.
So is this just misinformation? 2024, he spent $9,000.
Why is this show?
What? What?
He's looking at, he's looking balancing.
Oh, I thought he, I thought he was asking me a question.
That's the fund that you would pay for, like newly elected.
I understand. How do we go, how do we go from 2024 from $9,000 to $12,000? That's, I just, what?
Does it need?
I'm pretty sure we were budgeted the same
last year and this year.
We don't need to, we don't need to increase it. I mean, you don't have a problem with that?
I don't think so.
There's a little bit of extra money in that.
Mr. Rosenbaum? Mr. Rosenbaum, is that just an error or we, this elected officials, 1217, we have expanded 2024 $9,289?
There is no reason to think that it's not correct.
She said there's no reason to believe it's not.
You're, you're wondering how it's there if it wasn't in the budget?
Right.
I think earlier, Mr. Rosenbaum noted that additional appropriations aren't reflected in the budget column, but the expenditure column would probably include them, right?
Yes.
Okay, they may have come back and asked for an additional appropriation, and that's how it was spent then.
Okay, thank you.
That kind of sounds familiar, too. I feel like that might have happened.
Okay. That's probably what it was. I just, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, it's okay. Well, nobody, nobody knew. Okay, thank you.
Entertained motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Keel. Second. They're going?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pressel. All in favor in approving the elected officials training fund?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just another.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. No? Come on up. Moving on to the coroner.
I should walk it up. Mr. Rosenbaum, or whoever, is, is the Superior Court coming in early or that, or you want to pop somebody before that? Because before.
Lunch is here.
Huh?
Lunch is here.
No, it's not the question I'm asking.
Want to just bump everybody?
No, no, when we get off of lunch, because we're having a big break here.
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Gotcha.
Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Having a blast.
Good.
Full energy, ready to go. All right, let's start with. That's not going to work. See here, flat for officials.
Your only increase is in autopsies?
No, I asked for $200 extra in office supplies. And the autopsy is not an increase. That's my yearly amount that we pay every year. But each year when I come, they say, we'll give you 150 and come back when you need more. So just, you know, so that you can have some accurate numbers for a budget. It's the same every year, 192.
Give or take.
No, well, yeah, it could go down.
Yeah.
It's not going to go up, but it could go down. You know, depending on the number of autopsies. It's based on, you know.
What historical record, right? Based on what you've had historical performance here over?
Yes, and obviously, it's a number I can't control. We've just been very lucky that it has not gone over the amount, you know, that we kind of figured it for.
Do we, the, the ones that we get reimbursed for?
Uh huh, that's, right, that's not in this number at all.
Goes straight into the general fund?
No.
It's a separate fund, and she, as I said, she could tell you the same. It's, there's a flat fee for the state. We take the money in, we pay the money out.
Right.
And that's how it goes when, and, and anything that's not ours, that's required.
It's a complete money in, money out account. And it's totally separate from the autopsies that the county pays for.
And what account is that?
It's a 4076 account.
Do we have to budget that, or is that?
No, we do not budget it.
Special because it's from the state?
We do not budget it. It's like I said, it's, when I bill the state, when I bill the prison, they bill the county where the offender originally lived. That's who pays for it. Then I get paid. I ask for it to be appropriated into an account to pay it out, and when the money comes in, I pay it out, and it's a zero balance again.
It's pretty much money in, money out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mark. All right, any further questions? Now entertained motion.
Could I ask a question before you?
Yeah.
Go further? I don't know if you're voting on everything that, that has been submitted or just on this autopsy one.
200s and 300s.
200s and 300s as well.
I'm sorry?
200s and 300s is what we'll be voting on today.
Okay, well, I have a question about the 100 account. For the past several years, I've asked for an increase for my chief deputy. I've sent Monique all the paperwork for a reevaluation. I did that in April. I've not heard anything back from her yet. It clearly states in her job description, or in the job description, on-call 24/7. She makes $25,000 a year. She's also responsible for training of all new hires and all of our scheduling. What do I have to do to get a raise for her? I know, I know the situation with the county where, you know.
But when it comes to a job reevaluation, it, to my mind, that's exactly what you should have done, and it was done prior to June.
I think there's one scheduled for this week or first of next week.
It's first of next week.
And it's on the agenda. I know.
Okay, because I've not heard a thing from HR about this, so.
Okay.
I was just curious, I, you know.
I'd reach out to her, assure that it's confirmed with what these guys are calling.
The end of June, still haven't heard anything.
Feel free to CC us on it if you'd like.
I'm sorry?
Feel free to CC us on it if you'd like.
Okay.
Yep, and just confirming, because your attendance is necessary for some of that stuff.
Just waiting to hear.
So, okay.
Motion to approve 107 at the 2025 numbers.
Oh, okay.
So.
So you want to reduce autopsy to?
I'm going to hold it to what we did last year.
Which was 150?
150. Okay. And then office supplies is 600.
Well, what'd you say the office supplies was for? No, the 200.
The $200?
Yeah.
Because we're now having to purchase cartridges for the printer, which we did not before, prior to the flood issue. We always use the copier that was available in the hallway that was, belonged to IT. When we, when the flood happened and we had to move to 8th Street, we had to purchase our own printer. And now we have to buy cartridges for it, and they're $189 per cartridge.
Okay.
My motion stands.
Motion stands. So motion to approve 2025 adopted numbers for 200s and 300s for 107. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mollner.
Discussion.
Mr. Keel.
So, so $150,000 isn't going to cover it for the full year. You're going, you're going to come back.
$16,000 a month.
Yeah.
It's $192,000 a year.
This is a fixed amount. It's not, it doesn't go up and it doesn't go down. It won't be less than that.
Unless we come to the end of the year and find out that the number that we based that 16,000 a year on is less, then he will adjust it down and give us a discount for, you know.
How often, how often do we get a discount off of it?
He'll just reduce his bill.
Depends on the year.
But, so, but some years we do get a discount?
Yes.
How much has that discount been historic?
A thousand to 2,000.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, it's not substantial, because, you know.
I guess I'm trying to understand what's, what's the rationale here by not approving the whole thing? Who are we getting leverage over?
Maybe I'm, is, so we have a contract with somebody?
It's Dr. Fesco.
And he gets paid regardless of how many autopsies?
Right.
I mean, it's a con?
Right.
Why wouldn't it be per job?
Job.
I always thought.
Because we'd be paying a lot more money.
The rate's higher.
The rate is higher.
Is he figuring that he gets all the autopsy work and so?
He bases it on five autopsies a month. We're averaging seven to eight right now. We're only halfway through the year, and we've done. I was going to look up the number before I came down here, but then you called and said, come early.
May I? When you gave me numbers not too long ago, it worked out to be within 25 cents for the first six months.
Okay.
So based upon the average cost that you also gave me, so they were right on the mark for the first six months.
You have a contract.
But again, you know, I don't, I, I, we're looking to try and make sure that there's, where the contract is. It was started, I believe, before. We're going to, we're going to make sure that there's something in play, that there's some sort of
Gotcha.
in our file.
Not to dismiss the fact that this is a very specialized situation. Are there other available sources for autopsies within locality, within the county?
Not within our county, no.
Not within our county.
This is the attractive job.
The only doctor.
He's the only pathologist doing autopsies.
So I guess my question is, $192,000 contract that no one else even looks at, bids on, you don't solicit.
Unless we go up to up into Michigan or to Fort Wayne, there's no one, I'm sorry, there's no one around here doing autopsies. There's no one to ask for another price.
I was, I always thought in the past that it was per autopsy because people would, they would come back and go, you know, we had to have X number of autopsies at $3,035,000 in autism.
Yeah, and most.
Since I've been the coroner, and I know when Bob Cutler was a coroner prior to me, we were not being billed individually.
Let me interject real quick. What she's, what she's had to come back to us for is when it had to do with somebody that passed in La Porte County, but had, but was transported to Porter or St. Joe.
I have to pay for those as well.
And they, she pays their rate.
I understand. I mean, it's still, it's the same pathologist doing it, but it's coming out of Porter County's budget, so they bill me to reimburse their budget.
And they may have a more lucrative contract for the pathologist.
Yeah, usually not.
Okay. Okay, they, they upcharge you.
Wait, so they're actually marking it up? They're taking the?
They're not.
They're not?
He has different prices. Let me see what I've paid them. We get one rate based on the amount of autopsies we do. They get another rate based on the amount of autopsies that he does for them. Well, actually, the last one that I paid to Porter County was $3,000.
Which is two and change more than what we're paying.
Okay. Two and change more?
Yeah, we have an odd, weird number.
I'm okay with that.
I know I've paid them for more than one this year so far.
It's the first time I've ever heard it's a contract. Yeah. I'm still. Is that approved by the commissioner?
Who approves this contract with?
I'm sorry?
Who approves the contract with, with this, the pathologist?
Commissioners?
The commissioners do?
You go to them every year and for $192,000?
It's just rolled. It has not been.
It's not been approved by the commissioners?
It's been rolled as a renewal.
Oh, it's a renewal.
So that's, that's, so that's the only thing I can say. I don't know more. I'm trying to get ahold of the document, too, so that I can.
So it's got an automatic renewal?
I don't know. I haven't seen the document. I learned about it first last month, and that's when I made an inquiry, and I'm looking at claims like you wouldn't believe. And it, and I hadn't looked at the first five months, but I said, you know, it's time to look at this one or that one. I rotated around, try and take the 20% of them.
So for the sake of our budgeting purposes and wrapping this up, I'd make an amendment to the motion to, to approve the 200s and 300s with this as requested, 192,000, but ask that we get some more clarification on that the contract's been approved, that all the things are in order, maybe send us a copy of it just so that we're familiar.
His motion.
Yeah.
It's a friendly suggestion, I guess, is it?
Yeah, or a friendly suggestion either.
I don't care. I just want to make sure we know that.
That way, we have the number, and if we think we're going to spend 192,000, we might as well plan we're going to spend 192,000, but it sounds like there's some questions about how this contract came to be.
Okay, I did deliver what was asked of me to the commissioners who then, I'm assuming, and.
I haven't seen it, so I'll.
Okay, well, then it lost the commissioners, so.
Yeah.
All right, so.
You're comfortable sending it with us, and that way we're all up to speed about what's going on, and then we can move on with the budget process.
More lunch. Yeah, well, we haven't voted on the, we have.
Or someone can amend their, their motion.
Yep.
He's a no.
I don't.
You're going to stick with your?
I did, because this is the first I've ever heard that there's a $192,000 contract. I never heard of it.
All right, if there's issues with the contract after we get it back, then, then, I mean, it's part of my motion to approve it now, or amend it to approve it now. If there's issues with the contract, then it would be taken back later, so.
Yeah, we do, we haven't fully, let's investigate it. When we go back to look at the 100s, we'll consider this as well, so it's. Are you?
Once we get the information to your friendly amendment. You know what I'm saying?
All right. So right now, as, as I understand it, it stands at the original motion.
Unless there's a second to his amendment.
I mean, the reason I put it forward is so that we have the full number of what we think it's going to be as we're doing this budget process, because we're, we're keeping a live tally here. If we approve it at 150, our live tally is going to reflect that, and it'll look lower, even though we know we're probably going to come back for another 40 to 50 later. And I see what you're doing. You're trying to leverage, making sure we get info into it as well, which is what I'm hoping to accomplish, too. Me, too.
All right, do I have a second for the amendment?
Friendly.
Friendly amendment. Going once?